So we now have school committee minutes to approve from July 11th and July 26th. And I'll entertain a motion in.
Should we do it one?
We could if we want to, that works, we definitely could.
There's two of them, right?
There's two.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the July 11th meeting.
No, Miss.
Oh, sorry.
And the 26th?
It squeaks today. Oh, we're gonna do it together?
We can.
That was it, and the July 26th, 2019 meetings.
I second.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? What's what?
Who made the motion and who seconded, sorry?
Mary made the motion, I second in.
And that was for?
Approving both minutes for July, yeah, July 11th and the 26th.
Perfect.
And Lydia for, I don't know.
Wait a minute. All who, wait?
I'm not opposed.
All abstained.
I'm abstaining because I didn't do my homework, I didn't read them.
Okay, very good.
I haven't read them yet.
So 5-0-1.
Thank you.
Okay. Got it.
Okay, thank you, so we're done with that. So I'm gonna open up my notes so I can move into my chairperson's report. Me, I'm just gonna take one second to get there. So first, while I'm getting there, we just had a workshop where we are revisiting the school committee goals and starting to create SMART goals within subcommittees in relation to those goals for both the overall, both the overall school committee and in relation to the work being done within the subcommittees for the year. So we, once we have those in order, we will share them out. We are also gonna have those committees like tweaks, so then we'll be able to share out the final goals and priorities that we've got in place, and we're looking to do that by the second week in December. As of right now, we're looking at things like improving student performance metrics, trust rebuilding, strategic planning for student retention, budget, and the superintendent search, which will actually probably be over by the time we're finalizing the rest of the goals. So those are some of the things that we're looking at, and we're still in tweaking process and then developing our SMART goals within our subcommittees and bringing those back for further consideration. So then, I'm going to open my notes. Here we go. After everything else we've been working on, they were farther down than usual. I also just want to point out that Mary Jane had a family commitment tonight, so she sends her regrets for not being here. So first and foremost, I'd like to say that during our last school committee meeting on October 24th, a member of the public made a comment, made a complaint during public comments against a school committee member. We are following committee policy with regard to actively reviewing that complaint, so I wanted to make that update for everyone to understand that we take any complaint very seriously, and we will continue to keep you updated as that process plays out. On November 5th, there was a social thinking workshop at Fowler sponsored by CPAC, and that was something I wish I could've gone to, it was like, I wish we could record these things sometimes, since you can't be everywhere. It sounded very interesting, and it sounded like it was successful. So I'd love if there's anyone did go, I'd love to hear more about it during members' comments.
I couldn't, I couldn't go, but I know that, Jessica, did you end up going? No, Karen did, right?
Yeah.
When she gets, I know Karen, when she gets here, it might be something that she can highlight.
Okay, great. And on November 19th, there's gonna be the National Honor Society Junior Induction, first time, so it would be good to have a sense of who can make it. I'll send a follow-up email, but I just wanted to mention that.
We have a, isn't that our?
It's on the calendar.
Next collaboration, the 19th, isn't that the 19th?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
Okay, so I'll send an email, we can see what we're doing, what makes sense. Okay. The telethon kickoff for WAVM at the high school is December 6th at 8:00 PM, and they, one of the, this is new to me, so they have the chair come and give a, they invite all different people representatives from the schools, so one of those is the chair to be able to present one of the first donations. So I will be collecting donations from the school committee on behalf for, to be able to present, and to take the honor of being able to say something, so I will follow with about that via email as well. We have the superintendent evaluation pilot, we finally got an email on that, I forwarded it all along to you from Claire. And what Claire said in regards to that, apologies, but I have to see where that ended up, is that there is a school committee meeting. There she is. There is a school committee training that is going to be happening for free in Marlboro on November 25th from 9:30 to 11:00 AM. So I will again send an email to see who might be able to go to that.
Thanksgiving week. You have to do it then, huh?
So, I know, they have to do it Thanksgiving week. So they said that it's, the presentation will include an overview of the process, including evaluation requirements, the principles of best practice, and introduction to the recently revised training and guidance tools, as well as an introduction to the pilot indicator level rubric. Question-answer session will follow the presentation. So that's another thing. There will be, at the Maynard High School, we were invited to be able to contribute to mock interviews. So those are Tuesday, December 17th, from 12 to 2:00. They take place at Maynard High School in the library, volunteer interviewers, and this is anyone from the community that can do this, which is just a very fun and exciting thing to be able to do. Meet with three to four students for 10 to 15 minutes. You view the students' resumes, ask them general interview questions, and provide feedback as to how they performed. Yeah, I know, you've done this before, Mary?
I've done it numerous years, and it's one of my favorite days of the year, is just to see the students and, yeah, help them. So, Lynda, I think you have too, right? Yeah. You need to do that this year.
You!
You have to try, you have to.
News and notes from Maynard High School this week really just struck out at me as some of the great things we have to celebrate in Maynard, and I wanted to point that out. Some of them are, I was gonna point out, are actually in the superintendent's report as well, that interim superintendent report that Jennifer will be reading, so I won't go into those in relation to Fowler, but at the high school, just a few things. They're Brazilian Tzatzu Center in Acton, they have a True Path program that they're offering for free for interested students. They had college reps visiting in the next few weeks. They have had a YouTube video they had taken of their Maynard High School financial aid night, sorry if I'm stealing your thunder. And then there's the Maynard High news, if anyone has or hasn't seen that on YouTube, and it's just really, it's just really excellent. So it was just a really, I've seen them, I didn't, I get to look at them now and then, and they're fast, and they're fun, and they just do an excellent job, and it just gives you a real slice of Maynard High and their perspective on things. So I think it's in our students in Maynard, so it's fantastic celebration of our community. So, in any case, that's all I have. I did wanna just say, what I forgot to say, and sometimes forget to say, is that we are recording tonight under Massachusetts general law, we wanna make sure you're aware of that, this is a public meeting, and if anyone else does choose to record at any time, please just let me know so that we can make sure everyone is aware that that recording is happening. So that's it. So I'm now going to move into the student report, which I believe Pat's giving tonight. Thank you.
Lou, okay, all right. So on Tuesday, the anatomy and physiology classes took a field trip to the Museum of Science. I believe the exhibit was called, what was it, Body World?
Quite possible.
Okay, yeah, so it was an exhibit on, there were like a lot of like real human bodies that were preserved, and you got to see like the insides of bodies and how different organs function inside the body. I heard it was very interesting, I personally did not go, but I heard it was great. Today, the anatomy, oh, actually, this was technically not anatomy and physiology, but AP Bio classes and some other people that were mixed in took a field trip to Bristol Myers Squibb, which is a pharmaceutical company out of Devens, they also have a location in Cambridge and all over the place. This was very, I went to this one, this was very cool. It was all-inclusive, it was fully paid for by the company, so they sent our AP class, our AP Bio classes, there was like 30, 36, 37 of us that went. They gave us breakfast, provided us with lunch, and we took a tour of their facilities. So they're a big biotech company, so they showed us their labs and how scientists actually work on a day-to-day basis. And then during lunch, some of their employees came around and talked with small groups of students as they were eating about careers in biotech, the degrees that they have, how they went to college, how they got their degree, and how they ended up at Bristol Myers. And it, I like, I don't have an interest in biotech at all, but it was, it was seriously probably the best field trip I've ever been on, it was very, very cool. Yes. College, so our first official deadline has passed, 11-1, early action or early decision for some people. Of course, regular decision for everyone, and we still have regular decision applications due, usually in January, but people are stressed, no longer stressed, it's a big mix.
All over the place.
Yes. Also regarding future plans and things like that, senior projects, we've started writing our paper, our first five pages are due next week, so people are starting to get into the research, research mode and getting all their information onto the pages, and then our actual paper will be due at the end of the semester. This is on behalf of Talal, NHS president, they'll be coming down to the Fowler, no, this is Maynard High School, they'll be going to the Maynard High School library and reorganizing all the books, that sounds really fun, so. They'll also be painting a mural in the library, somewhere in the library, there will be a mural painted. Also NHS Homecoming on the 22nd from 7:00 to 10:00, the theme is officially A Night Under the Stars, which is different than what I told you guys last time, which was Fall in New England, Autumn New England. And then of course, the National Junior Honor Society, and some people from NHS will be there to provide support for the middle schoolers. And then from WAVM, tech crew is still happening, that's still a thing, hosts are still working. We posted some pictures on Facebook a couple days ago from our meeting on Monday at WAVM Productions, if you wanted to give us a, give us a follow. But yeah, no, it's good, and it's stressful, but it's great. Any questions?
Well, one, we appreciate your being here.
Of course.
So can I just offer a suggestion, Talal, this will be more for you because you'll be gone next year, Pat. Somebody that I work with in Acton was telling me that the National Honor Society in Acton, for Veterans Day or even Veterans Week, actually, they do it on Veterans Day at a hotel, they have a breakfast, they sponsor a breakfast for all the vets, the veterans, and I thought, wouldn't that be a great thing for you guys to do? So just throwing it out there, obviously not this year, but next year, even if you did it during the week and you had it here at the cafeteria, I think it'd be pretty amazing, so. Thank you.
He's graduate.
Obama, that's right. Oh, Obama, well, then pass it on. I was thinking he was a junior, okay, all right. Then pass it on, please, for next year, just thought it was, and they've been doing it in Acton, I guess, for a number of years, but, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we have any, anyone else have any further questions? I feel like, I appreciate the, there's a lot happening right now. Good to hear about the senior projects and moving into that research paper phase and that process, I know that that's a lot of work as well. And then you move into doing, and turning that into your presentation as well, and doing the kind of the tri-board of it.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Okay.
So now we're going to move into the interim superintendent report, as I mentioned, Mary Jane Rixson is not with us tonight, but she did send along a report, and Assistant Superintendent Jennifer Gutt, I will be reading that report for us.
So updates from?
Nope, I don't think you're on.
Nope.
I'm trying to get through them up to your clock.
Odd to say, when you have to type papers in two hours, don't you type fast? Okay. So, for Green Meadow, update for Green Meadow, on Tuesday, November 5th, Green Meadow began a series of fire safety programs taught by firefighter Michael Parr of the Maynard Fire Department. He is visiting with each class in preschool through grade three during their wellness classes to share information and help students to understand the importance of being prepared and aware in the event of a fire. Green Meadow students also participated in the world's largest shared reading experience, Read for the Record, sponsored by Jump Start. Jump Start is a national program based in Boston whose mission is to provide language, literacy, and social emotional supports to ensure all students enter kindergarten prepared to succeed. We are so fortunate that Jump Start has partnered with Stratus locally to sponsor this event at Green Meadow. Stratus will provide, provide readers and donate copies of this year's book selection, thank you, Oumu, by Oge Mora, to each classroom in preschool through grade three. They will also provide copies of the book selection to the school library that will be available for students to check out and share with their families. We are grateful for the generosity and support of the Stratus Corporation in this endeavor. Their commitment to early literacy and support of their school community has made it possible for us to participate in this important event. At the Fowler School, we would like to note that the Fowler School has joined the Math Olympiad team this year. We are fielding two teams, one for fifth and sixth graders and one for seventh and eighth graders. Each team has approximately 15 student representatives, and our mathletes will be competing with students from across the country on a monthly math contest beginning next week and continuing through March. The inaugural National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony takes place at November 19th, and we're all very excited about that. Fowler students will take place in the classroom-level Geography Bee on November 21st. Our top scorers will compete for a school championship on Thursday, December 5th, and their winner will go on to the state Geography Bee in the spring. I believe this is our second annual Geography Bee. Fowler students and families donated over 100 pounds of candies for our troops. The candy will be sent to active-duty personnel serving overseas, much of it facilitated by Operation Gratitude, who facilitates Operation Give Back each November. At Maynard High School, both the boys and girls soccer teams made it through to the first round of the tournaments. The girls are currently playing at Quail Bog, Quay Bog, so we're hoping that that is a good turnout for them and a good outcome. The quarterfinals for the boys will be Friday night. We do not yet, at least at this writing, know who they are playing. Do we have an update on that, anyone else? I don't know. We'll find out, but go Friday night. On 10/26, the girls cross-country team won their league race and earned league championships. The boys finished strong in third place, and congratulations to all runners involved. They will run in the district meet on November 9th at the Gardner Golf Course. One final note, a big shout-out to the JV soccer team for going undefeated this season with only one tie. The future of the boys soccer program looks bright, I'm sorry, that was the boys JV soccer program. The first quarter of the 2019-2020 school year has come to an end. Grades are available after Veterans Day weekend on Tuesday, November 12th. As a reminder, that is through our Tyler information system, so if you need information on how to sign up, please make sure you reach out to your school offices or to central office. James Trudeau from Maynard High Schools, French, who is Maynard High School's French and Spanish teacher, will be presenting a proposal for MHS students to go to Quebec City in February, so be on the lookout, that'll, that'll be coming forward soon. Community service hours were given to high school students who provided babysitting services at the town meeting and at the ELL potluck. Some central office updates, Maynard Public Schools, along with the town, has obtained a $12,500 grant to do an analysis of school and town property and the viability of providing solar energy to the community. This is something that we have had in the work since the new school opened, as it was built for that, so we're very excited to be moving forward. The superintendent's newsletter for October has included the process for school cancellations and delays. Also included are the various platforms where information will be posted, which are included in the Maynard Public Schools phone app. Additionally, this year, instead of only reaching out to one channel, we are reaching out to Boston Channel 10 and NACN, WBZ-TV Channel 4, Boston Channel 25, WHDH Channel 7, WCVBT-V Channel 5, and again on the Maynard Public School app for Android and Apple. One final statement, on Tuesday night, the English learner department hosted the second annual family dinner, family dinner potluck for students and families in the English learner program. The meal was potluck-style, so we were able to taste some incredible specialties from, from our families and from some of our administrators and teachers as well. After the dinner, several high school students played games with the children in the cafeteria while the English learner teachers provided information to their parents on access testing the WITA consortium and how to access information through Tyler. We would like to thank all of the families who attended, our EL teachers for organizing, Catherine Dorian, Karen Murphy, and Dom Nguyen, and then our EL committee members, Ann Duddy, Lisa DeSalvatore, and Charles Gabron for their organization of the event. This was our second annual event, and it was well-attended and well-received.
That's fantastic, thank you.
I've got just a comment and a question, if I could. So the comment is, I just wanted to really rave about Stratus. They continue to be incredibly supportive of the Maynard schools. I know, even with the taste for the Maynard Education Foundation, we can always count on them as a sponsor, and they also every year provide a scholarship to one of our seniors. So they, they're really a great, great partner in Maynard education. And then the question that I had, Jen, is these two programs, the Jump Start at the elementary and then the Math Olympiad, who initiated these?
The Jump Start, I believe, was done through Stratus, I think Stratus.
But I mean, who at the schools, who made the collaboration? Because I mean, these are the.
I will have to find out.
Yeah, because these are the kinds of things that set us apart, that I really want to acknowledge, if it was a teacher, if it was a principal, and also Fowler, the Math Olympiad.
Yeah.
Who, yeah, if you could find out.
I will find out.
Who actually created those, those networks, that would be great, because they do, they deserve the accolades, so, thank you. And then I bet Michelle was involved in the Sola grant. Thank you very much, I just, that's got your name all over it, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you very much. We are now going to move into citizens' comments. As you'll see on the back of the agenda, we do have some, just, did I do that right?
I think we have, yeah, acceptance of donations.
Oh, jeez, I'm just trying to go through way too quick. Thank you, everybody.
But it's soon.
Thank you, I appreciate that encouragement. So acceptance of donations, we're on to number six, not number seven, acceptance of donation from the Maynard Senior Citizens Club. So you have a letter, there's a donation for, they wanted to say it's approximately 2,135, and I, I'm not sure who would like to take over with this in particular, what we.
It's really, you just have to, any donation needs to be accepted by the school committee, so I actually spoke with her, I believe it was Nancy Hatch that I spoke with, and she wanted to make sure that the donation went towards music and the art departments equally, so this will be split between the two departments, and they will be able to purchase, she had mentioned supplies, but, you know, she was very lenient on what they spent it on, but that both the art and the music department would split it equally, so.
It was a cash donation, it wasn't a gift.
It's a cash donation.
Okay, it wasn't clear.
Yep, yep, it's a cash, they, they disbanded, and so they had money in their reserves, and they wanted to donate it to the school system.
That's fantastic, really thoughtful.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to accept the generous donation from the Maynard Senior Citizens Club in the amount of $2,135 to be allocated to the music and the art departments.
I second.
You second.
I would just maybe add that we are, it's being split equally.
Equally.
So with that consideration.
To be split evenly.
Okay, any other discussion on that? I guess not only, this isn't about the vote, but just to say, I'd love for us to be able to send a thank you to them.
Sure.
So however, should I just get in touch with Mary Jane to figure that out, in touch with you to figure that out?
Yeah, I think actually Colleen Andre already has something.
Okay.
Ready to go, we just waited, needed to wait for the approval of the donation.
Okay, that'll be awesome, great.
All in favor?
Hey, I get to say that part.
Well, I thought you were in such a hurry, I thought you were gonna move on.
All in favor, as Mary said? Okay, we're good.
I was just offering the suggestion.
All right, I think we're now moving on to number seven, which is citizens' comments, I apologize. So we will take, anyone that would like to speak, we just ask that you come up to the microphone and state your name, and as you'll see on the back, we do have just some guidelines for that. We do ask, generally speaking, people just try to keep their comments to three minutes and just for respecting time, but of course, we allow for people needing to say what they need to say. So, any citizens' comments at this time, please feel free to come forward. Okay, then I'm going to move on to item number eight. We have here tonight in our midst, we have Pam, is it Renninger, is that who?
Renninger.
Okay, very good. We're so grateful that you could come tonight, that's part of the reason I was trying to rush through, because I'm like, Pam's sitting there, and I wanna make sure she gets, so she's giving us a, what will now be a biannual update, this is the first time that we're getting this update, which is fantastic, we appreciate it. For the Aspen Valley Regional Technical High School, she's an appointed school committee member on, on the behalf of the Maynard School District for Aspen Valley. I'm sorry?
Elected.
Elected. Are you elected by?
Yes.
Oh, we elect you?
By us, yeah.
Who you get elected by then?
The town, the town.
The town.
She was, I knew.
I was there when it happened, and then I was elected.
Elected, yes.
Thank you, I apologize, and I don't.
My hand opposed.
Good for you. So, congratulations on that, and we would love to hear what you have to say. I do wanna just say that we, really, part of the reason we wanted to make sure that you got to come is because Aspen Valley is a real asset to the district, to be able to provide this education to students and that learners that have different interests, that, and that's really the, the point, and so we wanna understand what you have to say and stay in closer contact, so we appreciate your being here to be able to do that.
No problem. Well, as I said, I'm Pam Renninger, I'm the Aspen Valley School Committee Rep for Maynard. I wanna thank everyone for letting 78 students from the eighth grade participate in the walk-through and see what Aspen has to offer. It was a great turnout, a lot of enthusiasm, we love seeing the fresh new faces. We have an awful lot to offer for children that want an alternative means to these traditional education. Currently, our Maynard student population is 73 students, nine through 12. We also have one in post-grad, that's 21 freshmen. It is 17 sophomores, 22 juniors, and 13 seniors. Of that, they all participate in 17 programs that we have, I have a breakdown if anybody wants it, but I bet you you don't. As far as the current ratio that we have, interestingly enough, it is almost a 50-50 split. We have 56 males and 44 females, I think that's pretty good. We also have a lot of our females.
Has that grown over the years? Do you feel like that's grown a little bit, like the gap with the female, you know, can I just think of the technical aspect and?
So what I'll share with you is that the split runs fairly even, but what we have seen change is the technical programs that they are choosing to take. So females have small hands, and they do very well in carpentry, in metal fab, in auto-tech, in auto-body, because they can get into places that generally male hands can't get to. They also are very, not that men aren't, but they are, have attention to detail, so their welds and their saunters and things like that are much finer, which in some shops is preferred. So it's, it's interesting. We also have a lot of guys in our culinary programs, as well as our audio design, auto design and visual, so it's, it's, it's really a mix, it's what they find they're passionate. Of the students that graduate, the post-19 graduate plans, we had not, a total of two students go to a four-year public school, two years, four going to a private college, two years going to a two-year private college, as well as three going to, right into the workforce. We did not have anyone from the current graduating class going to the military. Let's see, so we have a variety of programs, our sports programs are all doing well, and I'm not gonna run through the roster, because unfortunately for us, we have a varsity JV and freshman team for most of our sports.
A lot.
It's a lot. Well, we get to have 1,200 kids, everybody, and we have a no-cup program, so there's a lot of students to pull from, so I'm not gonna go through all the, all the sporting events. But one of the things that is, yeah, we are very proud of, is we participate in the WGBH High School competition, and this past year, in Oct-, yeah, because we're in November, October, we ranked in the top 50, which is the first time we've ever done that. So we've broken into the top 50, so I'm so excited for our students.
Congratulations.
Right now, we're in prep, we'll be going into our skills competitions, which is where all of our shops get an opportunity to really, we go into a competitive environment. all of our shops get an opportunity to really, we go into a competitive environment with other schools, and put our best of the best up against other schools. And we come home with gold, silver, and bronze. And I'll be, I can be sharing more of that in June, on how we made out. What else? Aspet also has the Marine Corps JROTC program. You see us at the Maynard Christmas Parade. We also use that program for other volunteer opportunities throughout all of the towns that we represent. And one of the things that I thought was noteworthy to share with you is we have 11 Maynard students currently participating in our co-op programs. Children that earn the grade level to participate in co-op programs go out and earn their money with other, with companies, excuse me, that are teaching them skills within their technical fields. And most of those students are making between $13 and $18 an hour while still being in school.
Wow.
They do that every other week on their shop program, and they have to have their own transportation in order to do that. So generally, that's our juniors and seniors. That being said, our technical programs also go out to different towns when we have opportunities for things like, we've built a gazebo for Westboro. We have done a, we reconfigured a concession stand for Southboro. I will say that that's probably one thing that I'm disappointed in the town of Maynard, is we have not capitalized on that.
I was just actually making a note, like, how do we get a list of projects that would better?
No, you come up with a project that you need to accomplish, and you need to present it to the school. And then depending on what the needs are, I don't know if you've been following the Aspet, we also built a tiny house for a veteran in Maine in collaboration. So right now, they're working on the foundation and the septic system in Maine. And our carpentry, electrical, plumbing, and our, oh goodness, drafting program all participated in creating this tiny home, so that we can now deliver it to a veteran who's been appointed, and they're putting it on the foundation, probably in the end of November. And he will be able to occupy that for the winter. So.
I do believe, in terms of this, several years ago, when we renovated the town hall, there was work that was done through Aspet Valley where the students came out and did some of that. But we have certainly not.
Well, the Boys and Girls, Girls Club, I know, has participated in it. Like, we've, painting and design has been out. They've repainted, they've done murals, things like that. You know, the, probably the snack shack at the high school is the one that comes to mind in need of a little TLC.
Just hypothetically.
No, no, more than a little TLC. But I'm thinking that, you know, if we could come up with some projects, you know, definitely something worthwhile.
I would love to see us explore that a little bit more. I appreciate you highlighting that.
Yeah. And keep in mind also that, you know, we do have the auto body and auto tech programs. And as parents or community members, you can make appointments to have your work done over there as well. So it's a nice alternative for those.
Like oil changes, like that kind of stuff?
Yep.
Is there, is there a way that we would be able to get, like, like what type of, like, level of service that they can do? Is there a place that we would access that?
It's right on the website.
Is it right on the website, that they would just go directly there?
Yeah.
And I will say, I haven't had my car done, I haven't had my car done at Aspet Valley, but I did at a different technical school I was working at. The students are incredibly professional. As you bring them in, they do an amazing job. And I don't know, do you also do auto body?
They do auto body.
They do some auto body. And it's just, it's astounding to see, and they do great work. So it's.
The hardest part with the auto body department is if you don't make your appointment in September, you can't get in.
Correct.
You know, it's just really kind, well, it's, you know, for those things that you don't want to put through your insurance.
High demand.
So, yeah, it's, it's kind of high demand, so.
Yeah.
But, you know, the culinary program also does catering, and they also do pies for the holidays, and, you know, so like.
Lunches to die for.
I was gonna say, they have breakfast, one, the first Wednesday every month. And then on Thursday and Friday, they do lunches out of the Epicurean, and bless you.
Bless you.
I believe the prime rib dinner is like $9, and to die for.
And they do it, like, an Easter brunch, or they do some sort of?
They do an Easter brunch. And on Friday, so Veterans Day holiday is on Monday, so Friday, we're having a very big rally for the veterans. And all of our JROTC program will be in camis. And they represent really well, those students. So.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just wanted to make a comment about the culinary program, because Mauro and I went to the day on the hill, and Chef Trudeau.
Oh, yeah.
The head of, he organized the entire luncheon, all of the other schools and their culinary programs and that. And the food was amazing.
It was so good. He is amazing.
Yeah.
He has a smoker that he does pulled pork in the bag that is just to die for. I'm telling you, if that man opens a restaurant, I'm there.
He's also, he's participated in the Taste, Maynard Education Foundation, he's participated, the kids have participated in the Taste a few years. They haven't done it lately. Every year, I harass them, but he has young kids, I think, so it's a little trickier for him now.
He does.
But we keep asking him, because the food, the kids have definitely received honors from, from the items that they've, they've provided. So.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so it's great. Thank you.
Great. Anybody else have any questions?
I just wanted to confirm, I know, like, as Bethland mentioned, this is, you know, a new exercise for us to be able to have this opportunity, and that we do have you coming back April 2nd, which is, we're excited to be able to have that, and hopefully we can hear a little bit more about how things have progressed also through the year. But also thinking of if there's any way, if you have anything that you think the school committee can better do to support the Maynard kids over there, that you please reach out and communicate, because we want to make sure that this engagement is a two-way as much as possible, and anything we can do to help.
Okay. Now, my question to you, is that the type of information that you want, or is it more on what the school committee is doing currently? Because right now, we're just need even budgets.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit of both. So I know you brought this a little bit more.
Budget, it, this is a new old scenario, and it falls on us for not inviting the representative, because Laura Ross was the rep for years, and she used to come to us, and then we stopped asking. So thank you for, for doing, for coming back and doing this again. But any, because we constantly struggle, we, we've got a love, I want to call it a love-hate relationship.
Oh, you can call it a love-hate relationship.
You know, I mean, the money, you know, and you know, I mean, we're such a small community that every student that goes out, as much as they, it's the right place to go, we don't have any control over that. We're just handed a bill and we have to pay it. So anything that, you know, any influence that you could have on, on really helping to control that would be greatly appreciated. And yeah, if you have any information on the budget, it is early right now, but in April, that would be a great time for you. And maybe what we do is we invite the selectmen also and the finance committee to come. And nothing, you know, really, I don't want you to get nervous or anything like that, but...
Well, we present to them, so.
Oh, today they present anyway.
Yeah, we, I was nervous doing that last year. Yeah.
They do present, they do present to the finance committee.
Yeah, so maybe we should join them.
We should be going to that meeting also, then I would say.
And also, just to give you a heads up, and only because I'm friends with Chris and Ernie, do I know that, they actually come to our town meetings, and they sit there. We've never asked them any questions, but they're there during our budget, well, annual town meeting.
That is true.
Both Ernie and Chris have been here, one or the other each time, but.
And I'm not sure what questions we can ask, because again, we're at the receiving end.
Yes.
You know, versus working on our own budget, like you're working on your own budget. You know, we, we can have control to a certain extent of those things that we're in control of. But again, you know, we just, we really don't have, so I guess that's why we've never asked them any questions.
I think at the finance committee meeting, they do ask them some questions, but I think that is probably the best outlet for us to be at, if you want to have any questions about their budget. Because they're presenting to them, just like we present to them.
And I would, I think that for, for me, like, hearing about student achievement and the projects that the Maynard kids, you know, how, just the high level overview of the demographic, and what things, what you're noticing, maybe trends that are increasing and or not doing so well. I think for me, that's really good information to hear. You know, nothing that's too deep, but certainly reflective of Maynard's success.
Okay.
And, you know, at Aspet, I think that's really a good takeaway for us, and also the public, because, interesting, like, what you're talking about, like, that's out of our, my area of knowing about the different, you know, the, the different technical aspects, and what, what makes certain things more successful, and skills. And so I think that's just really good information to share and to keep those conversations open. So, thank you.
All right, great. And Mary, just so you know, there is a very detailed report booklet, whatever you want to call it, thesis, that we provide with lots of detail and backup for the budget and how it's all formulated.
Like an annual review, right?
No, they do, they do a budget book, just.
They do a budget book.
Yeah.
I have a copy if you want.
That would be helpful. That would be helpful. Yeah. I can probably just go online, too.
Maynard specific, but I believe that achievement data is also in there, if I recall correctly. So annually in the spring, like, this is information that, that we're getting within the town and things of that nature, so.
And we do our budget earlier than you do, because we have to be in front of you, so that you can weigh in on the budget. So.
And I did also wanted to mention that, which didn't slightly impact, but some of the links on the town website were broken, so they were updated. One of them was the Aspet.
Oh, okay.
So, so for community members who are looking, if they go under education, they actually cleared that a little bit up, and the town was able to make sure those links were active, and they actually go to the destination when they need to work. So hopefully, that gets people to access to information a little bit more accessible. And I would say also to you, if there's anything that, through the year before April, that is bubbling up, please, you know, reach out, so it's not something that, you know, we can kind of, either if it needs something that we need to hear about, like, please do.
Okay, great.
And it is great, like, even, you know, we, we always know what our seniors are doing when they go on, but to know what the seniors are doing, you know, each year, the classes and that, just to know where they're going to school, what they're going for, and that kind of thing, that sort of speaks to the trends, too. But it's always, that's always fun stuff for me. Yeah.
It is helpful. That's a tell.
Thank you very much.
So one of the last pieces I'd like to share with the school committee, but also thank you, and thank your administration for, we have, we are, have a very close working relationship with the administration. We are meeting, I think, next week or the week after, to submit a grant so that we can expand opportunities for students between Aspet Valley and Maynard. We have been talking about doing some more joint collaborative programming, so that our students are going there. Because I think the piece that's really important is, you know, and we understand sort of the dollar connection, but the part that's really important is that our students should be making decisions to go places and into programming that, that meets their needs. And what we want to make sure we're doing is providing the support before eighth grade, so that they can thoughtfully make that decision as they're looking at their high school option. And the Aspet Valley administration has been incredibly supportive of us working together in that regard. So thank you, and to the committee, and thank to the administration as well.
And there are also, just to piggyback on that, there, there are things that Maynard High School just can't offer, you know? And so the reality is that that's where, you know, for whatever decision-making purpose, you know, it's not as a detriment that they're going. It's sad that the dollars happen to be associated with that decision from, but it's really the success of what they're looking to do in their pathway in their career is what I want to make sure we're celebrating.
Well, understand, too, Natasha, that because we are a member town, that cost is much smaller than if we were not a member town.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
We have many towns that are not member towns, and they are paying a different rate than our Maynard towns are.
Yes, yes.
That's hard to fathom, because it's, it's just amazing to think of that. Yeah, that's good, it's good to have in mind. I appreciate that.
But thank you for putting that context to, to that, that financial aspect. That's important to highlight.
We also, in December, will be having another open house, and it's more of a, a tour of our technical programs. So a lot of the 78 students that came out to visit, the ones that are really interested, will go back to see really what, what they're capable of making.
Like the programming.
Yeah.
Cool.
So, all right. So would you mind, Pam, when you are doing your budget present, when you are called to FinCom, do you, do you mind alerting me, just so I know, just send an email so I can make sure I'm aware that that's happening? I can also ask the FinCom chair, but that way hopefully it doesn't fall through the cracks for us, too.
That would be great. Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, great.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay, very good. So we are now going to move into item number nine, Student Services Update. This is from our Director of People Services, Carol Gehan. Thank you very much.
Since the last time I was at school committee, I believe it was at the town hall, there had been some questions posed to me as well as since that time. So I've put together a presentation to hopefully answer as many of those questions as possible. We were able to, Jennifer and I were able to get it up on the website. But it was hard to find a real easy place to put it.
Yeah, for it to land, yeah.
So I think what we did, Jennifer, is it's in documents.
Yep, so it's under the school committee documents. There is a folder for school committee presentat-, under school committee documents. There's a folder for school committee presentations, and in there, I have uploaded, I think, all of the accountability presentations, the strategic plan updates over the last four years, five years, and this presentation is on there as well, and we'll work on getting others up there.
Is that a new folder?
Yeah.
Oh, terrific. Because I know it's hard to not like have, just keep it organized, but like access information.
Yeah, so it's there now, and it's organized, at least within the folders. We probably have to do some renaming and such, and we should probably figure out a page to put it on, so it's more accessible, but at least.
It's there.
The stuff's there.
Accessible. Thank you.
Just really quick as well, we also, thankfully, created a finance page or a business office page, and we uploaded some budget documents to that as well.
It's part of his inter.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
So he answered phones?
He's killing it.
Okay, sorry.
Making my life easier.
All right, thank you, Carol. Sorry.
You're welcome.
You meet all the SOLA appointments as well.
Wow.
So thank you.
Okay. Is it not working?
Why is it not moving? Oh, nope, not there. The up-down arrow is not moving.
Why are you doing that? Pam, was, was the amount of time good, about 15 minutes? Do you want more? Do you want less? Do you want to just tell us when the time comes?
Maybe just didn't push it hard enough.
Okay.
I mean, I'll talk online if you want.
Thank you.
I hope this is the right one.
I think it is.
It's not going in this thing.
Oh, nope.
Different iterations, you gotta get to the right one. That's okay.
Yes. So as she tries to find that, I will try to, because I know there are copies out there, and you all have copies.
Yeah.
Although the copy you got probably earlier today.
Okay.
Is not what we're gonna show here. We just, we've added some things to try to answer some questions.
Okay, great.
Thank you. And thank you for, for considering any questions that were provided.
Well, I, I would like to try to, you know, provide as much information as we can. So, you know, I was asked to, you know, so what, what are our goals, you know, as, as a department? And I feel very responsible for, as a, as the director, for us, for my team chairs, for our, working with our teachers, looking at, we should always be looking at our population, so that we're providing the best services we can to our students. And as the populations change, we need to always consider that. So I feel that that's, that's an important goal. I think what you've got in your, you've got a sheet that, well, that's what I just talked about. Thank you.
Yeah, we have that in the back. I think that's the last.
Yeah, we moved it to the front, because we thought it was a little popular here.
Yeah, it's.
It is in here.
Yep, it is.
Yeah.
So overall, for this year, what we're working on is a cohesive plan to implement the, we're calling it the dyslexia screening, because that's just the easiest way, the simplest way to, to say what that is. Although it's not a screening for just dyslexia. And the action steps for what we need to do for the students that need intervention. So that's one big goal. And then to increase the ability for staff to support our social, emotional learning needs, and to develop trauma-sensitive school com- needs and to develop trauma-sensitive school community. So a little bit about the dyslexia screening so far. So the purpose is to identify students that are at risk for reading difficulties. And in here, if you didn't get cut out, is a screen with some information directly from DESI, to be the next slide. So the purpose of what we're trying to do with this dyslexia screening is to find the students that are going to be at risk for reading difficulties and then determine what should we be doing about it? What kinds of interventions? How long do we look at the interventions? At what point are we going to refer to special ed? So, so far this year, at this point in time, all the students in kindergarten and first grade have been screened in the phonemic awareness skills. The second piece we need to do is rapid automatic naming. That really gives us information if students are going to struggle with fluency.
Can you, Carol, could you just explain that second one? Rapid.
Automatic naming. It's how quickly can a student recognize something? So some of the tests that do that is reading a list of real words in 45 seconds, reading a list of non-real words but really follow phonetic rules in 45 seconds. How fast can you do it? How fast can your brain figure out what that is? For young students, they might do it with colors. Okay, for students that don't know letters. So this is information I took directly from the DESI site. At the end of this dyslexia portion, I've put in the link to the DESI site. So what the new law is requiring, the new federal law is requiring the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in consultation with the Department of Early Education and Care is to issue guidelines to assist the districts in developing screening procedures or protocols for students that demonstrate one or more potential indicators of a neurological learning disability, including but not limited to dyslexia. Most schools have already been doing screenings. We do preschool screenings, we do kindergarten screenings, most schools, all the schools I've ever worked at have done kindergarten screenings. Now what we are doing is really looking at it more closely for things of what can we do to really help find those students that might be really at risk for a reading disability. Other things for the, from the department, the Department of Ed will be providing the guidance for the requirements to comply with this law. They have not done that yet. I expect it to come out before the end of the school year. I was at a conference earlier, maybe three weeks ago, found out the state is piloting four different computer-based screening programs. So that means you can do a whole class at once and get results, which would be quick, which is a whole lot faster than what we're doing right now.
Is there a screening that you can, or a pilot that we can sign up for or do you know what's involved in?
I know, I've, I didn't bring it with me, but I do know what four programs they're looking at.
Okay.
And so most likely they're going to give us some guidance as to, they're not going to tell us use this one or use that one, but they might give us guidance as far as which ones they might suggest. They did this way back when they were talking about preschool curriculums. They piloted a number and came back with three that suggested, they suggested to school districts, these are three you might want to look at. So when that.
So every student would have a computer in front of them, every kindergarten student and that's, yeah. So we're assuming that every kindergartner has, is at access to.
Just for the screening.
Right, for the screening, it would be.
Not every student has that ability coming from their home.
No, so what would happen is that in the school.
But they, but that might be their first introduction to.
I don't think it would be that kind of, my guess is that, that is something that they would be looking at within these screenings and it wouldn't be that type of piece for kindergarten. I'm guessing it's going to be some sort of touchscreen drop and drag.
It might be. I have not seen the particular programs that they, they're looking at.
But that would be obviously a consideration, like age appropriate.
I would imagine that.
Yeah, they're taking that into account.
If this is something that's coming.
It's a kindergarten screening, so.
Right. And if this is something that's coming from the state, they're making recommendations for districts that have many, many more students who would not have that opportunity than Maynard.
So once we get that information from the state, we'll adjust what we're doing. But right now we're moving forward to be able to do something to help the kids this We're working with CPAC. CPAC and myself have developed a number of subcommittees, but within this particular area, we have a focus group working to develop a cohesive plan. So right now we have two CPAC board members, two special educators, two general educators. They're both from Green Meadow, but they're lower elementary, building principal and This is a draft. Big words, big letters, draft, okay? I expect some of this to have a lot more detail by the end of the year, but I wanted to give you something since you asked. We're looking at the kindergarten screening parent questionnaire. We want to see, is there questions that we can ask about family members having reading difficulties or being diagnosed with dyslexia because it's very genetic? Ask more, so we're looking at what we have now for a parent questionnaire and what do we want to add to it? We've already pulled from a number of different other communities for parent questionnaires. So our next meeting we'll be looking at that. As I said, we've, the fall screening we've done for K and one students, the phonemic awareness, we haven't done the fluency skills. So before I said rapid automatic naming, fluency skills, they're the same thing. I've got the tests for it. Now I just need to figure out who has some time to be able to do that. That should be happening soon, very soon. And then looking at those screening results, we've already started looking at the phonemic awareness results and determining who needs some intervention and what that is, what does that intervention look like? So I have, we can look at any one class and see which class might have more needs and who we can send in there, as well as we're providing the teachers with more resources. Donna Dinkner has really been doing a nice job there with different type, giving, giving the materials that have, that identify the different types of, the different types of phonemic awareness. So this screening, when they get the, each teacher gets the results, they're going to be able to see, is it rhyme recognition? Is it rhyme production? Is it syllable? It has to do with syllables. I have that, the list of things in another slide. We're also working on providing professional development to all pre-K to grade three. Some of that Donna has been working on since last year. Some of it will be through this, the results of the kindergarten screening and going into classes like a speech and language therapist or a resource teacher and doing some targeted interventions. The classroom teacher will be part of that. We'll be doing mid-year and end-of-year screenings for the students already identified in previous screenings to see how they have improved. Determine, at what point in all this do we want to determine when a student is, needs to be referred for special education?
Can I ask Carol a question on, on the last two? So the mid-year and end of year, is that something like, so that'll be like next year? We would be, what would we do with that for this year? So you had a screening early, like in the fall and then we would do another mid-year to see how progress or no progress potentially.
Right, for just the kids that, that didn't make mastery.
Right, that were identified, that were identified. And then, and then another third screening possibly at the end of the year. So one child potentially could be screened three times in one year.
Yes, yes.
For that, so that's good information. And then the determination referred to services, is that something that goes through like the, the building base support team or?
It could.
Possibly.
It could, it definitely could go that way. I mean, naturally that would be the way to go.
I just didn't know if there was like a separate, because I know there was some conversations, I know in the fall, or in the fall, no, sorry, in the late summer, about having a different, like subcommittees or something, a literacy, and I didn't know if that would be part of.
That, that subcommittee wouldn't have the.
Would be different, okay.
This would be different because this would be going, I, I do think the building base support team, the BBST.
Yeah.
Would be the place to go because generally that's where teachers bring their concerns about a student. And this, when that needs to go to BBST, we've already done some interventions with the student. So most likely that will be at the point of saying, okay, it's time to refer this child for an evaluation.
Right, because that's what I was thinking. So we're doing three screenings, which is great to, to keep someone on the radar, but like what is the monitoring through that year would be looking like, you know?
And that's what I don't know yet.
Right, exactly. So considerations to have as we're going.
This is likely going to be very similar to the Title I process that we go through where the Title I team looks at the data and sees and has conversations with the teacher, brings it through BBST and then they're referred in that capacity. So I think, I mean, I think these are structures that, because, and we do assessments at Green Meadow three times a year for almost every assessment that we give in benchmarking. So I think these are processes that are likely going to echo some of the processes that we already have in there.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. I just, you know, the Title I, I think there's some improvement there in that process.
Right, and that, so I'd like to jump on that. I don't think, because what I have heard a couple of times is parents concerned about the length of time a student stays in Title I. What I'm looking at here, and I could be all wrong, because as I said, big draft, is How, what, how many areas is a student not meeting mastery? You're not going to work on all the areas at once because it's somewhat developmental. So if you, if you look here on this screen, I've listed all the subtests of the phonological awareness. Those end ones down at the bottom, phoneme deletion of the first sound consonant blend, the phoneme substitution, those are like later first grade, okay? The ones in the beginning are rhyme recognition, rhyme production, that is something we'd expect a preschooler to recognize, right? So this is listed in a sort of developmental continuum. So, and this is what I'm thinking, if we see a student that hasn't mastered rhyme recognition, rhyme production, and we've given them some targeted intervention over a number of weeks, the teacher is, is doing some things like maybe they're singing some rhyme songs or they're going through the hall and say, I see, what, what, what do you see that rhymes with "hat," you know, or something like that? So that kids are listening and they can just do little things. So looking at, at what point would we refer a student for special education? We're going to be looking at, how many areas are we looking to target and what's the rate of progress? If there's not a rate of progress in there that definitely, you know, have concern for me. So that's what we're going to look at. I think we're going to look at things a little quicker than we look at with something like a Title I. Because here we're already looking, we'll be looking at how they're doing in the areas they haven't mastered, whether it's phonemic awareness, rapid automatic naming, but we also might have background information that the, the uncle and the father have, have had significant reading problems, you know? So we're going to watch that student a little more closely. The hope here is that when we, we identify students, give them some targeted interventions or maybe they get into special ed a little sooner than they would have previous. So that's my hope. We get them, we find them earlier and we get them some intervention or some special ed earlier so that by the, this is my hope, that by the time they're in third grade, they're in a much better place.
I think too, in regards to the Title I piece, I know that that has been a topic of conversation and certainly when I first came on board, we had something like 40% of our students at Green Meadow receiving pullout Title I services. Title I is designed as a tier-two intervention, which if, you know, you should be looking at between maybe 12% or less of your, of your population receiving that. So over the last several years, we have worked incredibly hard to reduce that number, not because we don't want to see people having services, but because it was being over prescribed. The first thing that you have to look at with any of these pieces, any of these assessments is, is the, is the tier-one level of instruction being done in a high-quality way where the students are getting it? If you have 40% of students who need interventions, then the tier-one is not, is not working. And I think this is something very similar when we started to look at and just think about some of the data that we're showing there, the first question we're asking is where are we teaching this? Where are we explicitly helping kids to do this or are we assuming that they're going to pick it up naturally on their own, which we know isn't going to happen for some kids?
And I think it's the monitoring piece, which is always I get, you know, the monitoring, the rate of progress, and you, you said that, that for me is something that I, I think that we can be a little bit more robust in sometimes and, and how we're doing that to then kick off that necessary next step a little bit.
The other piece of Title I that's different than this is that these are some very specific discrete skills.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, we are providing services in Title I for math, right? There's a whole lot of stuff that you provide in there. And so sometimes, and we look at this and the Title I teachers look at this and the, you know, if we have a student who is in Title I, if they're not making progress, then they're referred in different situations. If they made progress in one area, but they're still lagging skills in another area related to math, they may stay in because they're getting that targeted intervention in a different way. So I think as, and I apologize about making the connection between Title I, I just think the steps are similar.
Yes.
But I think these are very different discrete skills with particularly the, the research being done around family and inherited traits to identify some students who need some intervention much, much quicker.
Right, right. And I agree, the discrete skills, I was just, I was going to say that too. We're looking at very fine skills here. And then the rapid, rapid automatic naming, I explained it a little bit, but for the younger kids that don't know their letters, can't read words in 45 seconds, we're looking at their ability to, like the preschoolers would be to name, name a color if they know their colors, and then to name a letter. We're looking at how fast can they recognize it and get it out.
Do we, around processes and consideration of when you would trigger to special education, is there, do you anticipate there being any guidance from the state on that level of consideration?
No, I don't.
Okay.
No. I don't.
We don't anywhere else. I mean.
That's what I thought.
They don't give it like a Title, Title I.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to.
I think they give strategies around, you know, percentages you should expect to see, how you can look for inequities within the data, if, you know, if a certain percentage of a certain type of demographic is, has an increased likelihood or increased percentage in an area, you want to identify where that is, but there, I, I haven't seen anything about.
No, I think it's going to relate back to specific learning disability criteria. When I first became a, a special ed teacher, it was all about what's your cognitive abilities and what's your academic abilities and the diff, this discrepancy between there. Somewhere in, I think, the two, early 2000s, DESI decided that you didn't have to have that, but you could do, looking at sort of like an RTI process, which is similar to what I'm talking here. Give the student some targeted intervention, watch the progress, such as a student, kindergarten students having trouble with some of his letters, not quite up to the same pace as his peers. You might have the teacher work with him five minutes, three days a week on his targeted letters. Look at it in four weeks. With that little bit of intervention, did he make progress? If he didn't, try it 10 minutes, maybe there's a paraprofessional, somebody else that can do it, and see if that's enough. At some point you decide, okay, that's not working and you make, use that data to make the referral to special ed. And special ed could use that data for eligibility. That's what I'm thinking is going to, how we use this, this data and whether or not students make progress with the kinds of intervention we're able to provide.
And that's where consideration with the, possibly with the building base support team would be, because I know that there is some general guidance about monitoring through the building base support team where it's, I don't know, six or eight weeks or something over here measurable before you reassess.
Yeah.
Progress, so.
In terms of those pieces.
Yeah.
I'll wait until you have your drink and then I'll ask my question. So you talked about professional.
So you talked about professional development for the teachers and that. Are the paraprofessionals also receiving professional development? Because they're with these students too, and you just referred to the fact that they'll be helping.
Yeah, I think that it would be, it would be somewhat easy to be able to do that. We have paraprofessionals here on, some of the half-days.
Right.
So that would be a special Green Meadow, an easy thing for us to target.
The other thing that we have discussed multiple times, and I, I believe is happening because they're in the classroom when this is occurring, is training the kindergarten paraprofessionals in interventions as well, so that they're being able to provide some of these screenings, and then also provide some of the practice support. And we're talking about doing that similarly for other components in Title I. It's not Title I, but it's in early literacy and math, so that we train them with some of the interventions we use when we pull students into Title I. So that's happening more in the classroom spaces, hitting it hard early in the year, or early in their school career, so we're not seeing any issues later on.
And I think also, just in general, I mean, if, if someone is providing the services for interventions, and they're listed on the service grid, to do that, they need to be trained, you know, to that. So if it is, right, so if it is a paraprofessional is providing interventions in that regard.
It seems.
But this would be before we get to an IEP.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Can I ask, also ask, I know it's a difficult question to answer, but how, in a regular classroom, how many students could we expect that would fall into this category that a teacher has to, you know, think about?
I don't know yet.
Yeah. It's just, it seems, we put so much on our teachers. It just, you know, every, every child is different, and then, you know.
And every child in every district is different.
Right, right.
And, and so part of what this is, and this is, this is just another component of, of how we make sure that our students are getting the skills that we need. The first piece is, are we providing that instruction? So if we're not providing instruction, we're not assessing whether students are mastering the skills as a result of that, we are going to expect to see more students require higher costs and more disruptive interventions, because we haven't done the first piece.
Okay, yep, yeah. All right, thank you.
So I've said some of this already. So to date, we've, I've identified the name here, the phonemic awareness skills test. It's called PAST, abbreviated. It's from the Florida Center for Reading Research, a place that is pretty reputable. I've talked about some of these interventions. Based on the data, classroom teachers are going to be providing some targeted phonemic awareness instruction into either whole class or small group. Donna has been already working with them, providing them some additional materials to make it easier. I have a speech and language therapist that's going to be able to work two periods a week with the kindergarten classrooms on phonemic awareness. Whether it's just two periods that she has available, so she might work into one kindergarten class for a couple of weeks and then jump to another class, that hasn't been completely finalized. Then I have a resource teacher that is going to be working in some of the classrooms based on the screening, where the students have been identified as having less than mastery. And as, as I said, we still need to complete the rapid automatic naming screening.
Has, has that, I know that you were looking at what type we, you were going to use.
Yeah, we've purchased RAN-RAS is the, the one, and a lot of places use it. So it's very quick, so we just decided to go with that.
Can you repeat that?
RAN-RAS. So, I don't know if I put it in there somewhere. So the RAN is the rapid automatic naming. I forget what the RAS is for. But I can get it to you. I, I wrote it somewhere, and I don't, I don't think it ended up on any of these slides.
I apologize.
So Carol, we can expect those to be incorporated into next year's curriculum? Is that it? It's all going to be ready to go in September, those interventions?
Yeah, because I see what we're doing this year is, we're sort of, as somebody once said to me when we were developing the Oasis program, we're flying, we're building the plane as we're flying it. So instead of waiting for a lot of guidance from Desi, we're, we're going ahead. We might not be using the PAST next year, but we'll still have the same kinds of steps in place. So right now, our phonics curriculum, we've been, all the grades from pre-K to three have the foundations. A very well-respected program. It comes out of Wilson Reading. Wilson Reading is one of the very respected evidence-based programs recognized for helping students with dyslexia. It's very step-by-step, very prescriptive. It gives you even the way you should be saying it, so that everybody's using the same wording, the same vocabulary. The foundation's cue cards are the same as they are in the Wilson program. So if students end up being identified as having a reading disability or dyslexia, they've had, they've already been exposed to the cues in the foundations program, so when they might get services on an IEP and get into Wilson, the cues are the same. But they're, the, the intensity would be there for the students with the IEPs.
I have a question about, let's see, the Spanish immersion, and I'll let you sleep, but I have a follow-up question.
And I'm not even going to attempt to say what that program is.
Estrugita.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have enough trouble with English. So that's the Spanish program for, the phonics program for K to one. And then the, in the Spanish immersion, grade three. What happened to grade two?
So the Estrugita program is a program for grades K and one. We are exploring what, what we should do with grade two. One of, and I, I don't want to dive too deeply into a rabbit hole about, about what's different about phonics programs in an immersion versus the Wilson or the foundations. But so we're exploring what we do in grade two. One of the thoughts is, for this year and next year, we use the Estrugita, since those students haven't had it. But once we get through the program in grades K and one, then we'll need some sort of component. It's possible we could use the Estrugita for students with Spanish instruction who are struggling in grade two. In grade three, we then transition to the phonics program in English and foundations, so that they're making sure that they're getting those English phonics skills as well, and that they're not going to, that if there's any literacy components within, that are different within English than from Spanish that don't transfer, that we're targeting those directly. So right now, we're doing the entirety of the English phonics program in grade three to get used to the program and to see what it is, so our teachers are trained. I spoke with the teacher leader, Spanish immersion teacher leader, and one of the things that we want to look at is, do we need to do the entirety of the foundations program once the teacher's familiar with it? Or should we be pulling just those specific language skills that are not transferable from the Spanish language to the English to do that? So we're in conversations, and we'll probably know more next year about what we want to do in that capacity.
How is the screening for the kindergarten and the first for Spanish immersion? How does that work? I'm just thinking about if there's identified, like if you're talking about the three years, and there's monitoring interventions, how would that work for Spanish immersion?
The phonemic awareness screening skills test, the, the PAST, is all auditory. So how well can you hear it? Do you know how to rhyme? We have, some, sometimes a student, we will see, even after you teach them to rhyme, they can't hear it. So it would be different for students that are English learners. They've grown up with, in the home with a language other than English, and maybe now they're in Spanish immersion. That would be different. But if a student has grown up in a house with English as their first language, and they speak English amongst their friends, out at recess, the, the phonemic awareness test is looking at how well they can hear. And I, and it's not.
The rapid naming is a little bit different though, right? That would be.
The rapid naming, but it's true, but going back on, and I could be all wrong. But if you're asking a kindergartner if they know their colors, they probably learned their colors in English. But if, if they only want to say their colors in Spanish, then I think we can adjust.
I mean, that would be transferable, right? I think that would be transferable, because even if they said it in Spanish, it's the speed at which they come up with the answer.
Right, right. That's what I think that the rapid naming would be.
Carol, how many of our teachers are Wilson certified?
I was just going to talk about that.
Oh, okay, because, because there are some schools of thought that all of our elementary teachers should be Wilson certified, because that type of learning works for everybody. It's a pretty generic, that even for those students who, you know, aren't having issues.
Are you saying that our Gen Ed teachers be certified in Wilson?
There's, yeah, at least in the lower grades, that they should be, that it would benefit all students.
I think that's what the foundation does, though. Wilson is, you really, when you go and get your Wilson training, you get your Level One, when you start your practicum with them, you have to choose a second-grade student. You can't choose a student lower than that.
Okay.
And that's what I like about the foundations, is that it's like Wilson. You're using the same cues, you've got the same visuals, they've got the same, the students have little metal folders with letter tiles, blend tiles, digraphs, and that's the same in foundations as well as Wilson.
The other thing that I think is important to understand about the, the intervention training, whether it's Orton Gillingham or Wilson, is that these are essentially year-long graduate courses with intensive practicum components. So it's not a professional development that we could, you know, even have, take all of our PD time and do. For the level certifications that we're speaking of, it's thirty hours of coursework plus practicum components. We do have some teachers who have expressed interest, and one of them is, I think.
A Gen Ed teacher.
A Gen Ed teacher who's doing it. So where, where, where there is interest, we certainly are doing those components. But one of the practicality components of, of mandating that all of our teachers earn that training is, it's different than saying, I need you to attend a twelve-hour training on.
And fun, and foundations is a tier-one.
Yes.
Well, it's a tier-one and a tier-two, actually.
Okay.
On their, on their website, it's listed as both.
Okay. And so the training that the teachers who have been trained under foundations, are they all have gone through the program? Or is this like Train the Trainer kind of, is it training that happens internally? Or do they all go through the foundation through Wilson?
No, what, so we did not choose to have Wilson come out to do their session, because the way that they often do it is one of two ways. One, they have you attend three full-day trainings on your grade-level specific.
Foundation program, yeah.
Or what they do is, they ask for, I think it's between ten and fifteen thousand dollar sort of embedded professional development, where they come out for the full year. So what we did, since we're fortunate that we have a literacy specialist as our principal of curriculum instruction and assessment, who has used the Wilson product, she's been trained by Wilson, she attended a refresher training, if you will, in the summer before we put this forward, our literacy coach did as well, and did job-embedded training with our teachers over the course of the year. So she did a preliminary training in the first days of school, and then was working with teachers during common planning times as groups, and then as preparation times, if there was an individual teacher who was having challenge. And during our half-days and full-days of professional development, we did a variety of sessions. One was, you know, teachers could choose to do like a professional learning community where they get together to talk about how they're implementing. The same day, other groups of teachers were led by two staff members who have facility within the program, and it was, it was sort of more supported and facilitated, but again, it was very collegial-based. And then Ms. Dankner did a, okay, let's open the box, and let's look at all the things, and let's go. Okay, let's step one, step two, step three. So, and we did that several times throughout the year with those components.
And that was la, at least last year, not the before.
We are also offering, I believe, the five teachers went to.
They went to the Wilson site with Donna this year for some of the foundations training.
And we have offered online training, that they can access online training if they wish. Same with Estrugita. You know, so we're doing it in more of a job-embedded fashion, which the research shows is, is more appropriate. Or you get more, more retention of the skills. Wilson will tell you that they should come out and do their training for the year.
If you're looking, if, if, if part of your question was, what, how many teachers do we have? You did ask, how many teachers do we have that are Wilson certified?
Yeah, in each building.
So, Wilson certified Level One, okay? At Green Meadow, we have two at this time. We have two at Fowler, and we did have two at the high school, but we lost one teacher, so now we have one. You know, and as Jennifer was saying, when you go through the Wilson training, it's intense.
I didn't realize it was that intense.
First, you've got to go through three, the easy part is the three, the first three days of training. It's like first three days of a workshop. That's the easy one. Then you're taking the equivalent in one year, the equivalent of three graduate courses. Plus, you have to be doing sixty sessions with the student that you've chosen that fits the criteria. You are observed and critiqued for several of those. I think it's, in many is six, if not ten, I'm not sure. And then you have sessions with your cohort on that, on top of all that. So this is really time-intensive for a teacher. But whenever somebody says, can I go to the Wilson training? We definitely try to, to make that happen. I would love to have all of our special ed teachers down at Green Meadow certified in Wilson.
Could we have that as kind of a prerequisite for going forward?
Over the last two years, I think every special education position we have posted for, we said Wilson or Orton Gillingham either required or strongly preferred, or something along those lines.
That's a good, that's a good start, yeah.
It's a good, yeah, so we're, we're definitely looking for those components, and certainly we're letting new teachers, when they come in, particularly within the special ed department, know this is something we're going to be asking you to do in, in some time.
Not the first year, maybe the second year.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Do they know what the expectation is coming in?
Yep, absolutely.
Yep.
Okay, good, thank you.
And if we can hire somebody who already has it, that's a bonus.
Which we did, a couple, right? We did do a couple.
Yes. So this is the end of the sort of reading dyslexia portion. So I, that's a hyperlink to the Desi site that has a special page, Des for Dyslexia. There's a lot of resources and hyperlinks within that that lead you to a lot of different things. So I, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to get this up on the web, so parents can see that.
Thank you, and I did find it on there. Actually, that's what I was looking along, was the, the one that's posted, so thank you for.
I did, yes. So I just have a follow-up question. This is great about Green Meadow. What about the students that are higher? What are we doing for them that have already been identified?
Well, here in this building, we have the language-based program. But the teacher that has Orton Gillingham, she has a lot. She has Orton Gillingham, she has Wilson, she has Linda Mobell, which is, has a different kind of phonics, kind of program. She has Revo, which is a fluency program. She came with a lot of.
And she has a lot of pull-out services, correct?
Yes, yes, she's doing mostly.
It's more pull-out.
Because at this point, that's what you, sort of what you have to do, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, she does have some students that are in there for ELA in math.
Yeah.
But it's, it, that's what the program is right now.
And then the high school would be, is a similar type of situation?
The high school, we, we're, we don't have the students that is disabled as, as why we've started the, the language-based program here. But we also have our co-teacher in fourth grade. When she, we hired her, she came with Wilson. Don't remember if she has OG, which has a lot of experience as well with other kinds of programs too. So she's doing some Wilson groups when she's not in the co-taught class.
And I remember like part of the turnaround plan, when that was a conversation, was there was consideration on Fowler, kids who maybe for school refusal, who had, you know, couldn't read at maybe at a level, and had anxiety around that, and how to best support, identify, and bridge that intervention before they start the high school, possibly with some other, because that is a possibility, kids transfer in, and they not at a level. You know, and, and I think that, that's really important to keep supporting, because I think it feeds ultimately in absenteeism, chronic absenteeism.
The other thing that we really work with our staff on, particularly at the secondary level, and it's a bit easier now with one-to-one devices and technology, is to identify readings that are within the same content area and are appropriate for high school students, but are different reading levels. You know, so sometimes we have different texts that are edited, if it's a novel that everyone is reading together. So that is something that as we're building our curriculum, we're really looking to provide those intervent, they're not interventions, the accommodations from the beginning, so that those resources are built for teachers to know where they are. We're not completely finished in that capacity, but I do know that a lot of our programs that we are offering, online programs and things of that nature, around informational texts, provide teachers with the ability to say, I want this reading level, this one, and this one. We also have the IXL program up at the high school, which should, for some students who have these types of issues or challenges in literacy, but also in math, some skilled. in literacy, but also in math, some skill deficits, they should be able to close some gaps there as well. And so we'll, again, first year of this implementation, we'll see how we're using it and what we're doing at the high school level. But those are some of the pieces we're doing for students at the high school level who may have some of these challenges. And I think, Mary, it goes back to your question about, you know, we're putting a lot on our teachers to do some of this work. And I remember, as a high school history teacher, I had students who had very low reading levels or ability to sort of process the information. And it was my job to go find the liaison or to go find the English learner teacher, whoever it was, to say, "Okay, how can I make this successful?"
It's inclusion, that's inclusion.
And what I did was I had to underline some of the words and give them a definition on the outside, right? So it took me more time to create the handouts. But by doing so, they were able to then participate in the work in the way that they should have been able to.
Accessing their education in an inclusive manner.
And I think that that's just, that's an industry standard that we should be expecting.
The other thing that we're just in the process of doing, we've had a subscription at the building level at the high school for Learning Ally. Think audible, but for textbooks as well. Free books, you know, so we, students would be able to access books that they would just like to read for leisure, as well as textbooks. Michelle and I have been working on, of getting it as a district, so that all students, and they don't have to have a disability to get it, to be able to access this. So we're going to, we did a little bit of research. If we, you know, go into a longer contract, it's cheaper than buying three different building licenses.
Get that purchasing power, Michelle.
Yeah, I just have a question into the town manager just on the length of the contract that we can sign. So as soon as he gets back to us, Carol was good and wrote a sole-source letter for us that I sent to them, just for them to review. And as soon as he gets back to us, I think we'll- it's definitely a significant savings for us. And we're able, like Carol did some great research and we're able to offer it to all students, so.
That'd be great, thank you.
Well, fingers crossed that that pans out.
Yeah, that would be. Because Learning Ally has a lot of textbooks.
Right.
And they have a human reader. Whereas there's another vendor called Bookshare. It used to be recordings for the blind and dyslexic, and you had to have a certified disability in order to participate. Whereas Learning Ally, we buy a building or a district license, anybody could use it.
The other component at the high school level and now at the middle school level with the one-to-one program is that a lot of, we're buying subscriptions of textbooks online. And so there's a lot of accessibility features built in in that capacity. I will say that, you know, for one of the pieces, for Go Math, for example, we're looking at a ninety thousand dollar price tag for a six-year renewal. And the program, I won't get into the details of the other piece of bad news that we got with the Go Math piece. And so I think we need to think about what open-source materials or other things that we can do, or already begun that question. But even with an online piece, there's going to be some usability features that are different than when I give you a physical book. So I think those are some really good technological advances over the last five years in Maynard, that we're going to be able to make things more accessible for kids.
Right. So now I'll go into sort of the sort of social-emotional-trauma-sensitiveive. And a good portion of this, this part of the presentation is things that we've presented in the past or we've talked in smaller groups. So this goal is really closely related to our district strategic plan. We took this from one of the past PowerPoints. So we have PBIS that we're doing in Green Meadow and Fowler. CPS is, which is Ross Green's Collaborative Problem Solving. We're still working on that, that's, that's slow-moving.
It provides similar challenges, although it should be less of a heavy lift than the Wilson level one in terms of length of time for certification. We also, when we were implementing this, there was, I don't, resistance isn't the right word. It's how do we find the time and structure within the school day for the appropriate person to be having this conversation? Because what we were doing essentially was our adjustment counselors were having these conversations, and it really needs to be that classroom teacher who's with that student. And so we're, we've taken a bit of a pause to try and figure out some of those logistical challenges.
We're also doing social thinking. Jill started that before I came, so we're still doing that. And then the explicit direct instruction. So we have students with some individual plans overseen by maybe an adjustment counselor, BCBA, or core team members. This, again, thinking about some social-emotional or trauma kinds of structures. So a little bit showing this in a little different light, the current work with students. We've got PBIS, we've got in-class instruction for zones of regulation, and then Michelle Garcia's social thinking that's happening in Green Meadow. We have tier-two supports with some of the two social-emotional pairs we have at Green Meadow. We started that with a grant two, three years ago. And then we have our tier-three instructions for students that struggle with some social-emotional kinds and trauma kinds of issues. Are our special education liaisons, our adjustment counselor might need to be a psychologist, depending on the level of the need. Current work with staff, the district whole leadership team went to MTSS. We went through our self-evaluation after that.
Can you explain what MTSS is again?
Multi-tiered Systems of Supports.
Thank you, I just wanted for everyone to hear that, thank you.
That's sort of the new RTI. If you know what RTI is, Response to Intervention. The new acronym is Multi-Tierred Systems of Supports.
And I think the piece of it, and we'll, you know, so we went as the CIA principals, the team leaders, no.
Team chairs.
Team chairs. Carol, myself, and Ms. Rickson came as well. So we went as a cohort group. And then we're bringing the self-evaluation back so that we can explore all of these pieces together within the district to determine where our next steps are. So RTI is sort of that triangle, and that triangle remains in the middle of MTSS. But MTSS really has all of the other components on the outside of those wraparound supports and services, that tier-one instruction, those other components that you need to have in order for this to be successful. And most often, it's not about people, it's about organization. It's about how you interact with each other. It's about, you know, what your procedures are for when a student is expressing challenge, either academically or behaviorally. You know, how you have multiple avenues to tackle that. So it's incredibly complex, but if you have children, they're pretty complex too. So when you have a lot of children, you need a complex system in order to help them all move in the direction that they need to go. I will tell you that even our leadership team feels overwhelmed by what this looks like when we start talking about it. You know, one of them expressed that, you know, "Well, I thought we were doing cultural proficiency, and I thought we were doing trauma-informed." And it's, we are, because it's all under this one umbrella. But they often feel like very separate pieces. So we're trying to do our work as a leadership team so that everyone on the leadership level is on board and understanding, so that they can lead that work with their staff.
Does safety care fall under the current work with staff too? I know that's another aspect of it.
Oh, did we not, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I know.
We had safety care in there at some point.
Might be on a different slide that I haven't seen.
Maybe the bullet fell.
We're doing a couple of things with safety care. We have trainings that happen before and after school for paraprofessionals and, I'm sorry, general educators or special education teachers. We require those who need it for the students in their classroom to attend. And we compensate in that capacity, we offer it for students and teachers who would like it. We are and have been, last year, we trained, I think, we counted this up at one point, I think it was forty people in the chapters one through three, which are the de-escalation strategies. I've talked with our BCBAs and Carol about how we could train all of our staff in those chapters. That is, what is it, the, it's a six-hour training, I think? It's a six-hour training? Janet is one of our facilitators.
Hey!
Yeah.
Shout out, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, and so what we're doing right now is we budgeted for the staff to do, the staff who must have the full entirety of it, and we're offering the first three. We did in the last teacher contract negotiate that the district could mandate specific trainings that we would then pay for. So we just need to figure out a budgetary component. And we have absolutely fabulous trainers that do an amazing job.
Yay!
So if we want to learn more about this MTSS, we can just look it up.
So the state has, matoolsforschools.org is the website with resources. There is information on the state website. We will be providing presentations once we figure out where we're at.
It would just be nice just to look at it.
That'd be great.
And there's really great resources on the ma tools for schools. There's videos.
What is it, ma tools?
I believe it's ma tools for schools. Yep, ma tools for schools.org. Their logo's a little narrow.
So some of the other things that we're doing already, currently doing, our school psychologists, last year, and again, we'll be doing this year, they've attended PD and they've been providing some PD to staff about being trauma-sensitive. So they can learn maybe about how some things that somebody might say that they personally react to. And then how they might say in a classroom for a student that has experienced different kinds of trauma and how triggering that can be, to develop that sensitivity. And again, we've got the Oasis up at the high school, thinking about Fowler, Green Meadow.
How would you envision like at Green Meadow? Just the younger grade, Oasis, just very high level, not to go too deep, but like-
You know, it's interesting, because we first started looking at this program, it's, you can look at it as bright, B-R-Y-T, out of Brookline. This, a lot of schools have done it in middle school first. And there are schools that have gone down into their elementary school. So I think there, you're looking at your student that, you're not looking at the student that is very physical or maybe is very impacted with a disability such as autism. But you're going to look at your students that have maybe some, maybe trauma, and they're having difficulties coming to school. As sad as it is these days, it's, there are kids, unfortunately, that have gotten hospitalized in kindergarten. So, you know, it's that, your student maybe that has a lot of anxiety. You know, those would be the kinds of students in the K to three that I would see going into if we had something like that.
That profile.
That kind of profile, right.
I think that was one of my questions is, I know we had talked, we were hoping this year to put it at Fowler. What would be the budget and what would it look like at Fowler?
It would be, depending, it would be about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty K.
And that would be for two personnel again, like we have a possible pair?
Two personnel and possible pair. Again, looking at the number of students. There are times that we're finding, you know, that the two people, the two professionals in a program like Oasis need to be at team meetings, need to be at clinical meetings. You need that, that third body to sort of be there. Or, you know, so it helps to have-
Yeah, when you think about like how much one student at a district tuition, you know, is ninety thousand or something to that effect, that you have, the staff serve more kids, you know, the cost.
And it obviously requires conversations with families and things of that nature. You know, so certainly I know that Carol's team looks at that monthly, if not weekly, to figure out, you know, where are the opportunities that we might be able to, you know, pull some folks back or do some different things with that. We are currently looking sort of in the budgetary process, because of the budgetary process, but then also, let's look at opportunities as a result of that. Could we do some restructuring of staffing that would be able to, would allow us to provide servicing in different ways that might be able to address some of these needs? So we look at some of those pieces. I think what is important to understand is that that upfront cost, you've got to put the dollars out first, right?
It's a long-term payoff.
Which we had at the high school, I believe. Either we were about to send students out or we had a student who was out that we brought back. I can't remember what the order was.
It's sort of a combination of both. We started to build the plane knowing that if we didn't, it would increase our out-of-districts. And then when we had the plane built, we were able to bring somebody back.
And I think that's what we need to really advocate for at the town level, is understanding that the hit, whatever, is really what's downstream saving.
That's what we do with the Connections program when we did have it in place, was it was where we were creating the program because students were coming up. And we knew that we had to get them, you know, create the program first, so it was going to cost, but then in the long term, it was going to save a lot and be better for the students to be in-house. So if you could keep a surprise to that, Carol, that would be great. As you do your research, because Litter and I can do some, you know-
Well, we have been discussing it to a certain extent.
We have, yeah, but to have more information, you know, the numbers would be great.
That's going to be a later agenda, but it might be something to bring up in all things Maynard.
I know we did last year, so they've heard it. There are new people this year, but yeah.
I did put a little bit of information from our Oasis program. I'm not going to go over it, but, because I, because we uploaded it to the website.
Yes, thank you.
Again, our overarching goal is to always be looking at our population. What are we doing well? Where do we need to improve? Or how has our student population changed that we need to change our toolbox? Or how we do things? I've always done that as I've grown up as a director. So, and I always tell that to my staff, my team, you know. Sometimes I feel like it's just like toss it up in the air and then let's make it land where we need it to land. Wanted a little information on our district. So looking, the next several slides all come from the radar site from DESI. So this is like we, three times a year, we provide them with numbers. And they put it all together in comparison to other districts. So I couldn't fit all this underneath the next several slides. So what they do is they, in the next several slides, will be looking at four-year placement and the trajectories by initial placement and by grade. So you're going to see how that, based through our numbers that we supply to the state, how that changed, how students have moved to a more restrictive setting. How likely are they to move to a less restrictive setting or no longer require IEP services? What's the trajectory for early identified students such as K and two initially? And that will be on the left-hand of charts that we will look at. How to do placement trajectories for students in out-of-districts compared with those of other districts. So that's a nice thing that this radar component provides, is that we can type in any other community and see how we rate. We can also, it will also choose communities for us that are, they see as similar to us. We might not agree, so we can change it. So this is one of the slides, and I hope it came out well in your handout.
It's not this-
We don't have it.
You don't have it. It's on the website. It's online, on the website.
It's online. The reason that these were not included is because we received some questions, or Carol did, related to this. And so because we have this information, we were able to put it together. So we wanted to-
Yeah, we do appreciate that. It's laid our responsiveness to what we were hoping to see, so.
And I know this is going on a lot longer than ten minutes.
It's okay.
It was fifteen.
I didn't make the time.
I don't know what we were talking about.
Sorry, it's very, very useful information. We appreciate the time that went into this, so.
So here, students who were in inclusive placement in 2015, and where are they now in 2019? So in grades K to two in Maynard, there were, if I'm reading this right, Jennifer, tell me if I'm wrong, there were thirty-five students, and I can even see this.
I think it's in your notes. Carol, I think you wrote it in your notes.
This is following the same cohort of kids?
Yes.
So it's twenty, this is twenty-six percent. This yellow orange line, that represents no IEP.
About it. About it.
This represents...
Inclusion.
Yeah, the gray is inclusion.
Gray inclusion, okay? The light blue is sub-separate, and the darker blue is out of district. So, um, we had six percent here. So we went to a more restrictive placement, three percent of those being out of district. Then if you look here on the left, these are what any grade. So within these numbers, it was a hundred and twenty-nine. Now, this is where, where were they in two thousand fifteen, and how did it change in two thousand nineteen? So nineteen percent, that's here, the no IEP, lesser restrictive placement. And then here, the thirteen is nine, and this light blue is thirteen percent, have moved to a more restrictive placement. And then what's nice about this is that gives you a little bit, uh, if you just look visually at the orange, which is no IEP, the inclusion, substantially separate, and then the out of district, it gives you a nice, a quick visual as to how are we doing compared to others. I know, I have to really study, when I look at the radar, I always have to study it.
Yeah, it's a lot of information to digest, and also to, I was just, I was just saying, like, I was, it's not really a comparison of fifteen to nineteen, right? Because I'm looking for fifteen's numbers.
It's where the students were in two thousand fifteen.
Right, that's what I was realizing after, it wasn't a fifteen chart or a nineteen chart.
So it's nineteen percent of them from being, um, on an IEP to not on an IEP.
From twenty-fif- looking at them from the time of twenty fifteen and now at twenty nineteen.
Nineteen percent would dark blue.
Essentially what you want to see, so for the first slide, they started in the orange. You want to see them, if, if the concept is we want to move students to less restrictive environments, we would want bigger bars in twenty nineteen in the darker orange, right? This slide Carol's going to go through starts with substantially separate, which is the gray. You want to see from fifteen to nineteen, bigger bars in the orange than in the blue.
Can we go back to the one in the general, can you explain that a little bit?
So in this, in this slide here, essentially what you want to see is more orange than gray or in the blues, because the students started in the gray. And if we're moving students to a less restrictive environment, by twenty nineteen, they would be identified within these orange bars. If they're moving to a more restrictive environment, because they started in the gray, they would be identified within the blue, light blue and dark blue bars. Does that make sense?
So the baseline is the students who are in, all of these students were in inclusive placements in two thousand fifteen. And so this is showing the, the transition of, of those students. That's what I was trying to get there, so they're all, they all were in the gray to start off with, right? Is that what, and that we're saying that now in nineteen, this is where they fall in K through, okay, thank you, that was...
K through two and then...
Yeah, and then, and regrade, so when we look at K through two, we can see how they transitioned twenty-six percent, if I'm reading this, went from inclusion to no IEP. Um, but then subs- the, the blue and the out of district, those are the areas where it increased.
Those are about three, no, they didn't increase...
They went from inclusion to out of district.
They went to a more restricted environment.
Restrictive environment, right, so if they, so the blue, that's, that's the transition where they went from gray to blue.
Correct.
Oh, and, okay, thank you.
The other thing to note, um, that Carol and I figured out is that where it says in any grade, um, this includes the grades K to two. So the bars on the left are, those numbers are included, and the bars on the right, this is, you can't add them together to get...
It's just, it just breaks it out into a separate number.
So one twenty-nine is essentially total students.
Correct.
And then thirty-five is of the twenty, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so then the next one, now that you understand it a little bit more, and as I said, I usually have to study it too. Um, this is talking about sub-separate placements. Um, so students that were in sub-separate placements in two thousand fifteen, where are they now? There, where there were less, on the left side, there's nothing there because there were less than six, so they didn't, they don't report it. On the right side, um, there were eight students that we're looking at. So tw- twenty-five percent or two.
Yeah.
Okay, so you can see it. Compare us to other districts, um, you know, we're not doing as well. Students are moving to more substantially separate placements.
Out of district.
Um, and out of districts. I didn't have to go into radar to see that, I knew that. So, but what this does say is, we can look at some of those other districts that have gone to more orange. Um, more, um, the, the orange is, the, the light orange is inclusion. So maybe we want to go visit Exbridge, or Auburn, or Millbury, or Ipswich, and see what are they doing differently?
Ex- Exbridge, didn't you, did somebody work in Exbridge before, like, what are they doing differently?
So that, you know, that might be something that maybe some CPAC members would like to go out on a couple of field trips.
Oh, is that an invitation for field trips?
I think what's interesting too, if you want to go back to that for one second, so I don't look at these numbers nearly as often as Carol does, and what this was, what was interesting to me is that we were much more in line with our students who started out in inclusion, um, comparatively than we were in line with our students who started out in substantially separate programs. And so for my question, you know, in looking at this, it says to me, okay, so we're not, we're not sending out a whole lot of kids who, from out of district percentage-wise, who were in inclusive environments comparatively to other districts. But what we are doing is that our substantially separate programs are sending more students out. So I think that that's a question...
Which is not happening there.
Yeah, and, and again, it's very small numbers, so...
But very costly, yeah.
There could be very legitimate reasons why each of those four students needed to go somewhere different. And that's what Carol and her team knows, because she knows the specifics of the stories. Uh, but I think the point is well taken of, let's go look at some of these other districts, and if you compare this slide, you can do this online, this slide with the slide before, many of the districts who are doing very well in moving to less restrictive environments from substantially separate programs are also doing very well in moving students to less restrictive environments in other programs. Um, so let's go see what they're doing, and maybe they have a better MTSS structure, maybe they, you know, let's see what's happening there.
Right.
This is just showing some of the out of district placements. So my analyzing, looking at the numbers, you know, and looking at why is this year and last year, what's the difference, why? So this is a, a one way I can share it with you. So in FY seventeen, we had twenty-five students out of districts, eighteen, twenty-five, nineteen, thirty-one, twenty, thirty-two. But what's very interesting is when I break it down and look at nineteen, why did it go from twenty-five to thirty-one? There was fifty percent of those placements were move-ins. They come in, we don't have a choice. They stay in their placements, usually there's an April first rule, I can go into that maybe some other day.
So move-ins from...
Other districts.
Not from kindergarten, like not starting off new, just like from upper grades beyond?
Yep.
Okay.
Upper grades, or they're coming from, um, another country, or something like that, that we know, we don't have programs. And it, it's not because they came from another country, it's more of the presentation of the student, um, and the significance of disabilities. So, and then when I look at, um, two thousand twenty, again, we have some graduates in there, you know, so that even though it looks like it's just a change of one, it's really some graduated and others came in. Again, another fifty percent of those students are kids that have just moved in. So...
This year alone, we've had a couple of move-ins just this year, right?
Yep.
So again, in, in that, talking about budget wise, you know, when we're doing the budget now for next year, we don't have the information, one, who we're going to be responsible for, because they only have to alert us by April first, which is really hard.
Yeah, really late in our budget.
Two, you know, um, if they come from out of country, um, we have no choice in the matter when it comes to billing or, or paying for those things. And along with the, the placement comes the transportation as well, and that's...
I have a question about the move-in part, because I can, that's, any town is really subject to that, right? It doesn't make, Maynard isn't special that we get extra move-in IEP eligible out of district kids, right? So that's where it's just hard for, just trying to marry the two, you know, ideas.
We, we talked a bit about this, and we could look, and, and I don't know that we would be able to get access to this data for other districts. Carol may be able to call, because we asked that question, like, what, why is that happening? We are a community that is affordable, that is close to Boston, if you're getting significant medical treatments or things of that nature, you want to be close to there. Um, if your, your job is in Boston or Worcester, or things of that nature, you know, so it may be that we are...
The profile of our town makes it...
Because those families are likely putting a lot of out-of-pocket medical bills.
Right.
That's the bottom line, and so they're not going to be able, they wouldn't be necessarily moving into it.
But the thing is, it's an important aspect to highlight.
Yeah, no, and I, it's an, and again, we could, I don't know that we could get this data, because literally, you know, Carol was showing me, she's like, I, I have the list of the kids, and I compare this year to this year to this, you know, those types of things. So we know the stories of each of the kids in their placement. You know, we may be able to ask what is happening in our surrounding communities, um, but we don't know that they've done that analysis to see. I think for Michelle and I, what was really telling is that, okay, so, because the question, we moved to town, if that's the problem, I don't know, there's a whole lot we can do, right?
But the other fifty percent is what we can focus our attention on.
And that's where I think Carol's going to talk about right here, that other fifty percent.
So some of the programs that we already have currently in districts, just to line them out for you on the left side. Um, we have the Green Meadow program, doesn't have a name, but it's our program that has ABA methodology. It's, uh, two different classrooms, one classroom is pre-K and K, the other classroom is one to three. Um, those students need a very different type of, um, teaching methodology, and that's the, the ABA. Fowler, we have, I don't know if we're calling it the Tiger Program, it's formerly the Compass Program, um, but that's our four to eight, four to eight program. Talked a little bit about the language-based program. At the high school, we have the Oasis, which is the nine to twelve. Um, some other considerations, we've mentioned Oasis, Agri Meadow or Fowler, and the cost of that. You know, looking at, at, um, students that, um, that have social, the, the social-emotional gaps. It's what I find challenging is when I look at our population across district, uh, you have to look at the type of challenges the students are having, their age groups, as well as their academic skill. You might have a cohort of five students, but the law only allows us to have them forty-eight months. Well, it might be forty-eight months, but some might be down in Green Meadow, and some might be here. Then you might have, within that same cohort, you might have students that, um, are on academic grade level or above. And also in that small cohort, you have students that are still struggling to learn to read. How do you put them all in a program? So those are things that we have to consider, we might see a lot of commonalities, but when you dig down deep to put them, to try to look at, do we have enough of a population to create a program so we can keep students here, those are some of the things we have to look at.
And that is the smaller district syndrome.
Absolutely. It, it is, um, so...
But that might be what we see when we go look at other programs, maybe there's a way...
I can imagine Exbridge is very huge or something.
That they're creating a thing that fits exactly what we need, or they're doing something different.
Yeah, you're doing, that, that is worth doing, because you just don't know, I appreciate that, yeah, yeah.
So, and then finally, this is where the safety care came in.
Oh, okay.
There you go. We just changed the slides around so much, couldn't remember. Um, so we're continuing emphasis on general education staff training, the safety care we've talked about, de-escalation strategies, um, looking at performance data analysis, um, at, at common planning time, at subgroups. We, I already talked about Wilson and Orton, Wilson and Orton Gillingham training. Orton Gillingham is very well respected as well, but you only do it one-on-one. So that's time-intensive as far as a, a teacher. But, you know, there are students that might need that and need the one-to-one, as opposed to Wilson allows for a small group. So I think...
So I've got a general question. Do we bring parents into this equation? Do we ever have professional development or workshop for parents so that they can actually, some of the things that the teachers are working with the kids during the day, they might be able to, um, work with at night? Just a thought that I just had. I know if I were a parent, I'd want to know, how can I help? What can I be doing to offset what you're doing during the daytime, like just reading to the kids?
I know the speech and language therapists, counselors do quite a bit of that, that's just sort of the nature of them. We do that with, um, some of our, um, Michelle Garcia winner and our zones of regulations, what's expected, what's unexpected.
CPAC workshops.
Rock brain, those kinds of things. We did have, I think my first or second year, I thought we had Nancy Clements come.
She was a professional development for Green Meadow, and then she was just here this week for CPAC.
Right, right, but I think that it wasn't this year or last year, but I think the year before we had, um, because we got a little bit of a grant money. So, um, but yes, I mean, that certainly can be, I, I think it's there.
Well, it's a partnership, it needs to be a partnership, right?
So whatever you're doing at school. So one of the things that we're working on, and we had, and we've been trying to sort of set up instruction, figure out how we can do this, is essentially like a parent university, if you will, around all of these different issues. That was something that when we started the Communication Task Force a few years ago, was addressed in terms of parents wanting to have, have that access around a variety of pieces. Um, and so it's how do we take it from piecemeal here or there to an operational? We have these every year, um, we've gotten better with the, um, we have sessions annually now, I think this is our second or third year, related to other issues, not necessarily the specific ones because of our, um, association with the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth, where we get resources to come out.
The computer, um, the cyber.
Yep, so we have, I think, four sessions that are happening this year. Um, and so, and, and all of these things, right, are, you gotta identify the cost associated to see, um, I believe we had someone from Collaborative and Proactive Solutions come out to do a parent presentation. They were four grand a day, if, if I recall correctly. I mean, it's, it's, so when we're talking these pieces, and, and they generally don't do, you know, they, they won't necessarily just do an hour sort of situation, you're, you're looking at half-day costs. So it's how do we operationalize that in a way that, um, is cost-effective? And if we're looking at continual reductions in professional development dollars and things of that nature. I think the CPAC collaboration is something that's great, and you all reach out to, um, you work collaboratively with CPACs around, around the region to offer those, and I think that's a hugely important component. Um, and, and so it, it's on the agenda, it's on the radar of what we need to do, um, it's, it's all those competing priorities, you know, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
And, and, um, just as you're thinking about, like, I know the social-emotional part, which I think is important, I mean, from my own personal experience, um, I, I found that that's always a tough one, because sometimes, especially the younger grades, um, it could be masking some other disability that, um, that is unknown or unrecognized, and so I am hoping that, you know, thinking about like the building-based supports and how those can be a little bit more responsive possibly if there's needing to be evaluations or identified for children, because then I think that will certainly help with identifying things earlier where maybe interventions can happen more in the school district, that...
I think the other component of that, um, we, we've talked a little bit about this, Carol and I work in close partnership, because, you know, the students come to, if we look at each owning a program, they come to my program for the first, right, most of the time. And so if we're not working in close partnership, like those pieces don't, don't fall. And what we talk a lot about is how do we tease out, particularly around students who are not meeting behavioral expectation, what the cause of that is? And a lot of that falls on my program, because if we have behavioral expectations and, or behavioral challenges, and...
Meaning gen ed is what you're thinking of.
In gen ed classrooms, correct? In Gen Ed classrooms, correct, in the Gen Ed classrooms. And the response of the team is that we have to address the behavior, then that means we're missing that opportunity to figure out what the behavior is telling us.
I think identifying the function of the behavior is what we need to be better at. And I think part of that sometimes involves maybe functional behavior assessments, a little bit more built in.
Sometimes it does, but sometimes it also involves the classroom teacher or the person who's interacting with the behavior being curious and asking a question, right? So yes, at some point, we're going to get to a place where we need a highly-trained professional to do some of this. We need to get better as a district, and this is not unique to Maynard, this is something that happens everywhere. We need to get better at how are we becoming curious about what the behavior is telling us so that we can then figure out what the appropriate next steps are. I've been in multiple conversations around behaviors that are, that are explosive, that are problematic, that are annoying, you know, whatever the case may be. And the focus is always on how do we stop the behavior? And we got to take a step back and say, why, why is the behavior happening? What is this telling me? And that's hard.
Isn't that part of the whole CPS model?
Yep, that's part of that. It's part of the MTSS structures and a lot of the pieces that they're doing. I mean, so it's really a mindset shift to say, okay, we got to, we got to figure out what's going on. The same thing if we're having academic challenges. You know, it's not that we need to get the kid to add, we need to figure out why they can't add. Is it because we're explaining it in a weird way that they don't get? We just need to explain it differently? Or is there something fundamentally problematic with the way in which math instruction is going into their brain and we need to do something very different? So we need to get, as my husband likes to say, get curious before we get furious.
Oh, I like that. No, but I, and I think the out-of-district, because I know that was something that I really appreciate you incorporating because I know that's a town-wide conversation also and has great impact. And so, you know, I think doing our due diligence and, and hearing about it and monitoring that is, I think, crucial for us to, to hear about and also to demonstrate that we are, you know, actively taking consideration and steps to try to remediate those costs clearly and what we're doing to do that. So I, you know, when you come back in the spring, I'd love to hear more about how the successes and maybe not-so-successes, where we're, what things I've been trying and maybe what we've learned from, from those projects or.
Yeah, and I really do think that the field study is an important piece and I think it would be great to have CPAC families, or any families, attend as well, to ask, so that it's not, because neither of us pretend.
What is this, this, the field?
The field, you're going to Upbridge or going on places. I think it'd be great to have families attend or parents attend.
I think CPAC engagement should absolutely be part of that and would welcome, I'm sure CPAC would welcome those opportunities to engage on those.
Because then, you know, you guys can ask the questions in ways that, of the questions that you have and it's not coming from, you know, well, this is what I know because of what I've seen, right?
It's a different lens.
Yeah, yep.
So, I mean, I think all stakeholders, and that's, again, I mentioned the FBA as a thing because it takes into account parent, you know, teacher all, not just what's happening at the school, but also stakeholders because sometimes it is unknown why behavior is, that is. And so that's where I think it's important to have all the stakeholders in there. So, thank you, thank you, Carol.
So I just want to acknowledge and say thank you because there was, we did follow a process and you did, really, there was a lot of thought and mindfulness and trying to address the questions that came up. We had asked the CPAC to be able, they were able to review because you provided a presentation ahead of time. And you know, there was a tight timeline for them, so thank you for your, for your quick review. There was a lot that went into being able to provide what I feel was a very.
Thank you, Jennifer, because I'm sure you.
Informational presentation and responsive to the questions that we had and we really appreciate that, really appreciate that. So now we're just going to continue with the rest of the agenda? So the next thing we have is.
Can I, can I ask, you know, when we have our principals here, we often ask that they be allowed to leave. Carol is often here at six-thirty or seven in the morning.
Maybe just ask if there's any citizens' questions.
Yeah, if we want to move up, if there are any citizens' comments in relation to presentation that would be useful for her to be able to hear at this time, given the late hour, would it be all right if we take, field those questions now? Without objection, we would move public comment in relation to anything that people might want to put out there related to the presentation.
And I think only, the only reason, just for context, is that public was, or CPAC was told that that would be allowed, that Carol would be here in case there are questions after the presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that was, so just, yeah, just so you understand, it's not.
I misunderstood, I thought we were going to be doing.
That's okay, we can move it up though because I do appreciate that.
Moving it up so she can leave, I think is just understanding that part, yeah.
And if anyone was here to be able to ask questions.
Yeah, and we don't have a lot of people here, so I imagine it won't be very, very long if anyone, and it doesn't look like anyone does.
Oh, I do.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it's open.
Yes, public comment.
Yes, you do, sorry, but yes.
Hi, Jessica Tool. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for answering some of the questions that we sent at the last minute. But in regards to the out-of-district placements, like, I love the idea of going and visiting other districts and see what they're doing for their programming, but I just really want to encourage also to have those conversations with the individual families. And I didn't hear a lot of that discussion tonight because I know as a parent with two kids out of district, I could tell you, this, 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 and this led to my kid going out of district. And I have a student that's going into ninth grade that I'm looking at a change, considering a change of placement for. And there is like this, this, and this, and this that I would like to see to bring him back. So I just want to make sure that we don't lose that direct conversation with the families that are affected.
I think that was one of the things that we didn't really talk about, but the, like, having focus groups with kids possibly or families who are out of district and.
So we did discuss, you know, because I received those questions, you know, Carol and I talked through it. I think one of the pieces, again, we got to figure out what, what problem we're trying to solve in that piece. And I think, you know, listening sessions are a great component, but when we looked at the data and identified sort of what similarities or differences might be between individual students, what Carol mentioned to me might be a better option is to have those individual conversations with families rather than a larger focus group piece. I mean, and certainly.
It could be two-pronged, I mean, one serves maybe one need and, you know, you don't, you don't maybe channel or a conversation platform to one way. Some people might just want to listen to other people's, you know, hearing or experiences, so.
I think that's great, I just would like to see a structure for those conversations to have, to take place because sometimes they happen in IP meetings, but some of it is, you know, you're not going to sit in your IP meeting and talk about all the things that led to your kid going out of district that would help the district keep bringing him back. Like, it's, it's a different conversation on a different level sometimes than when you're talking about the goals and the services in the IP.
Or a reflective conversation.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Anything else? Okay, then we would like to let Carol leave and head home after a long day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was a long drive.
And thank you for the time you took tonight, too, appreciate that. Okay, so just to be clear, we will continue with citizens' comments again. That was just for the sake of being able to say whatever people felt they needed, wanted to publicly state in relation to that presentation. So we're going to move next into the Green Meadow Future Committee Capital Planning Recommendations, which I, I'm going to hand over to Natasha and she will explain about this.
So I think there were a couple of considerations that, and I had shared it, emailed it earlier in the week with you. So, so there's a lot of recommendations from the Green Meadow Future Committee. Some of them are still ongoing in their conversations, particularly as it relates to capital planning recommendations. So that is not something, or that's what we were just able to confirm yesterday, that they did not vote on that as a, because last week they couldn't have their meeting. And so we have, what was shared are strong possibilities of what they will land on as it relates to the capital planning, but not everyone had a consensus from their subcommittee that's where they wanted to go forward. And I think there were some other concerns that they needed to work through. So I think for the conversation for tonight, it was the recommend, other recommendation that was the Green Meadow project involvement for the RFQ. And so the recommendations that were shared were particularly highlighting that Green Meadow Future Committee would like to have access to review the bids from the RFQ for the roof study and eventually the envelope study. And the Green Meadow Future Committee would like to be involved in the execution of all phases of the Green Meadow roof project. And just to kind of set a little background on where that came from was there were members who were previously on the high school building team and so the idea was that it would similarly follow that practice that, that was in Mary. You might be able to speak to a little bit more of, of that, but that building team or members of that team had more involvement into the, the review of the RFQ.
I'm not familiar with what their logistics were.
I just want to state that when Greg received the RFQ, he did send it to members of the Green Meadow Future Committee. I'm on the email as well, it was last Friday.
Okay, and this was a meeting before that, so.
Right, so I just wanted to update that he already sent them copies of the certain, like Josh's on his email.
Yeah, right, I think it was the concern of expertise and how, you know, who was weighing in and, and I, it's, I'm glad to hear that that was up. Because I think this was October 17th is when the recommendation was voted on by the Green Meadow Future Committee. So that was before.
Right, he did, well, it wasn't due until.
Yeah, but they didn't, I don't think anyone knew when it was happening, like, it was, I don't, I don't, and I don't even know if we have any awareness to.
We hadn't heard a particular update and we just knew that they were moving forward and making it happen, so.
Right.
He actually sent this to both myself and Josh Morse to review with him.
Great.
The RFQ that was submitted or the bids that were submitted?
All the bids that came in.
In response to, okay.
So it sounds like the town is, option one is, or recommendation one has already been implemented so that the Green Meadow Future Committee.
Michelle, do you know how many we had?
Hold on one second, I will tell you right now.
More than one?
Four.
Good, oh, that's good.
And I think, I remember Josh mentioning that he also sent it out to a whole bunch of his contacts as well. So I don't know how, how that.
We had, we had walked through, two companies showed up at the walkthrough that we walked through with.
Greg, I remember Greg mentioning that, was it like a week ago or a week and a half ago?
Well, it had to be two weeks before the bid was due, so if this was just due.
I just remember an email chain or something.
This was received on Friday, so two weeks before Friday. Myself, Mary, Jane, Greg, I know he invited some other people, but I think only the three of us showed up and did the walkthrough with the two, two of the four companies that placed.
So the ones that did the walkthrough eventually did put a bid?
I believe so, I believe two of these are them, yeah. I would have to check their business cards, but I'm assuming if they came to the walkthrough and went through everything.
Thank you, so what was the, the second one?
The second one was the Green Meadow Future Committee has asked to be involved in the execution of all phases of the Green Meadow roof project. And so I think that means as far as the planning of, or understanding of the timeline, where it would be if a bid, like if the project was determined to be like whole roof replacement, how, and I wasn't here for the whole meeting for this one, so I don't know where they, if they, any, all the detailed conversations.
Yeah, it does seem like they're saying that the high school building committee played an important role in being able to respond to community inquiries because they were involved in the execution.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, is it's more about communicating and.
They want to, yeah, they want to be having insight and awareness or visibility into that, so, yes, for the feedback.
Well, and be the point of contact for the rest of the community and parents who may have concerns and whatnot, rather than.
That coming to us or the town.
Yeah, or Michelle, getting bombarded with these questions.
So I will say in terms, I was on the, the high school building committee as well and essentially, and I don't know, it says involvement in all phases. I don't know the specifics of that. Essentially what that involvement was for the high school building, building committee, excuse me, is that the project manager at our, I believe they were monthly, they might have been semi-monthly, meetings would report on what had happened and what was not. So it was no, it was not decision-making, it was information.
Right, that's what it seems like they're saying.
I think that's what it means, I just, involvement, not like part of decision-making, but.
Or we determine that that's what that means and, and, you know.
We definitely don't want it to, want anybody to stop up or.
And the process can't impede for any, any thing. But I think maybe just making sure that there are the communication channels are really healthy there.
Capacity is that once the bid is awarded and it's decided upon what's happening, that the Green Meadow Future Committee receive a monthly update and that they invite either, if it's the DPW director or the facilities manager, whomever is overseeing the project to come in to speak.
At their Green Meadow Future Committee meeting, yeah, very good, okay, thank you. It's handy that you were on that committee so that you can speak to them.
Yes, because I think that was, there was a lot of conversation comparison to like what happened, I was like, I don't know what happened. So, thank you, I thought, that's why I was hoping, Mary, but.
No, I'm sorry, I wasn't.
I know, okay. I know, I know. All right, so that sounds, yeah, that was just for information sharing, so there was no, no voting on anything. I think that's just something that can be defined once we get.
Also for the capital requests, I did receive a copy of those, I have added them to our capital request. I, I didn't put it on our five-year plan, but it's within the same spreadsheet. It's, it's the, all that information, actually, again. The famous intern over here.
So, I, meaning we.
Actually, really him.
Meaning him.
Not even.
Totally him. So he was able to combine them, so they're part of our, we've been working with our admin team and, you know, building, at building level, where they've been putting through capital requests that were, you know, is going to be part of our budget process, it's going to be part of our budget presentation. So we've also done a five-year thing where we, you know, that we were asked to put out a five-year, so we're really trying to get to that. Like I said, we've received this information, it's within the same spreadsheet, it's just a different tab because it's not something that, you know, it wasn't part of our capital building.
No, but it's really, I mean, that was, that spoke to one of the main things that we had talked about is we really have to make sure that we're providing this to the capital planning committee. So that it's, they know it's there, it's on that plan. And how about Fowler and the high school?
So we, so my, our, our five-year plan has all buildings, so it's the high school, it's Fowler, it's Green Meadow. They, the building owners, as you could say, have put forth as their capital requests. This is, because it wasn't something that was vetted through us, is in that same workbook, but just as a separate sheet.
And I just want to add, just going back to Megan's email on why, what the rationale of why it was not like a recommendation yet was, they discussed to make it a formal recommendation, but then there were several members who were not comfortable with taking on the role of specific recommendations associated with costs without getting advice from professionals on what those costs would be. So that was the, the back and forth and that within their.
And I can respect that because that's what I ask of my, of, you know, when somebody's, when Chuck put through, you know, his request, I asked him to actually go out and get a couple of different quotes on what it would really cost and not just his best guess estimate on that. So that's the process that we used with all of our requests, which is why I didn't put this specifically. Because I had the backing information to say, you know, we've talked to a plumber and we went out for the three bids and this is how much it costs, you know, so it's not something that I could put forth as that I vetted it, where we've already vetted through the, the requests from our budget owners.
Right, and I think that's, that was the hesitation of why they didn't want to, so just to share that for.
So this is.
That is.
Draft form.
Yeah, it's like a draft of what, with like, with, but not vetting and not, the consensus hasn't, hasn't been a formal recommendation, it's just, I think some.
But the Green Meadow Futures Committee put this together.
Yes.
And how did they come up with the numbers?
I don't know, they haven't finished, they weren't able to meet last week, so I don't know where they finally landed or how they got to this. It was just shared with a, as a coming-down-the-pike kind of consideration. And, and so, but, yeah, nothing that decision-making should really be like solidly built on, but it's good to know.
But I felt it was good enough, it was important enough to.
It's good feedback, it's good feedback to get right out.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
If we're going to present to the town at some point or with, with some sort of information, it was good to have that information. it was good to have that information kind of tied to our capital.
Right, so more, they're, they're working, more work to happen, and I guess I don't know what that work would be, but then we should hear more about it once they talk more about it amongst themselves.
Thank you for incorporating that, yeah, I think that's part of the pivot for them to be looking more at capital needs, and we also are talking about, I have on my long list of things not to forget to do, is considering a school representative on the capital planning committee, and I'm just going to reach out to Krista Silver about that, but if you have any thoughts on that.
Because you used to, I was on it previously, but I don't think with the new.
And I don't know that, it should be you per se, but.
Well, I think the intention of the capital planning committee, the new iteration is that it'll be made up of community members, is my understanding.
The capital planning committee?
Yeah.
Previously, it was for, it was, I think what the discussion was, is that it was the employees, and to be honest, I don't know how many of us actually lived in town.
Live in Maynard, right, so maybe like a hybrid kind of.
But, so it was, it was, in in my perspective, it was great, because I was there and able to advocate for the schools with my knowledge base, with the information at my fingertips, you know, that type of thing, and and really know the backstory and how desperately things were needed, it feels a little weird not to have that at this point, but I understand, I understand the 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 reason for the change.
Yeah, yeah, okay, we can bat that around more then.
And that might be a conversation or a topic from a tri-board meeting.
Definitely.
We definitely think the school should be represented, so if it's a member of the school board, if the intention is that community members on this board advocating for a school committee member to be on the board, really do a lot of sense.
Of the capital planning committee?
Right.
I don't know that that's what the intent is, from my, our discussions at the budget subcommittee meeting, it seems that what they want is this group to determine a protocol for how the town will choose to spend any free monies or the increased revenue generated from 129 Parker or Millin Maine, whatnot, rather than going year by year saying, oh, we have this need here, let's use it for this, and and making on-the-spot decisions or reactive decisions, setting a protocol saying, okay, these are our goals, whether it be Green Meadow or the fire station or retirement building, these are our priorities, these are the projects that are going to get the money in this order, and this is how we're looking at financing these things, it's not, they won't.
It's not project-driven.
No.
It's more like a town desire.
It's town, it's like, okay, so what does it look like?
I would think having a school committee representative.
That's what I'm saying, it's kind of, it's kind of interesting that.
But they are meeting with the budget subcommittee, so like they had.
Just to give you a background, I was on that committee, and that's actually how we did it previously, so if, if, that's not a change from how we were looking at it when we were on the the capital planning, so it's, that's a little confusing.
Like a, like a long-term, you had a protocol, because as far as what we've been told is that this thing has been scripted and discussed, but was never fully accepted or acknowledged, and like last year, when certain people felt that the money that was spent on Green Meadow should have gone to the fire station, it didn't because we didn't have that protocol in place.
But the money that was spent on Green Meadow came from a reserve fund, not a capital request.
That was a vote from the town though.
Right, so the, the capital request, so the capital request, we did, we had a prioritized list, we went through, if we have this much money, how many things on this, we had a five-year plan, how many things on this five-year plan can we move forward with, you know, if we do, if we don't do this, what is the expense of it five years down the road, so there was a protocol, it was a priority list, it was a, you know, collaboration between like the departments on, you know, we know the police station needs another cruiser, we also know that like the, the.
The rug in the library at Fowler School needs to be replaced.
Right, you know, so.
This is beautiful.
This has been on the list for a while.
I can see the whole. Might take priority over the rug, you know what I'm saying, so they did think that, my understanding of the change is that they wanted different people making those priorities.
Well, and there's also, part of the protocol that we've been talking about is actually putting aside, no matter what the budget looks like, putting aside a certain amount of money every year, so that it's, it's a placeholder, not, I shouldn't even say a placeholder, because it's a line, a defined line item, that no matter what happens, we are going to be making some sort of an investment.
Right, which was, I think Andrew Scribner McLean presented on that, that was something that was come up with within our capital planning committee.
And I think we did for three years, and then we didn't because we needed the money to do so.
So I wonder if we need to like table this and have our, our tri-board meeting?
We actually kind of naturally moved into the next agenda item, so I think that that is a good piece for discussion at the tri-board, is in consideration of the capital planning committee, for us to just mention and consider, and what what the goal is of that, and not that we're going to figure that out in the meeting, but we're kind of, it's a roundtable to bring these things up.
Yeah, that's the purpose.
So, are we, are we good to then move into that and continue that, okay, so this is just on, on, we have an open meeting, we have all the boards together, we need to post it by tomorrow, on Tuesday, November twelfth, I believe it's six, Colleen's not, it's supposed to, right, the town would have.
Yeah, town posted, but we need.
Don't, do we need to also post it?
It's six-thirty, right?
Yeah, so it's six-thirty at the, at the golf course.
Right, golf course.
So that is where it will be taking place.
And so we just need to open the meeting and.
We'll all have to open our meetings. So.
Oh, I thought you were going to say something.
So within that, within regard to that, what that, what I was hoping we could do is just have a conversation to consider, to talk about what are the considerations we might want to bring up, if there was anything in particular, of course, everyone.
Did they, what was the, I know I've been hearing about it, hearing about it, what is the goal of it, just so that we can all sort of have a meeting before the February meeting that we talk about.
So we received the posting today from Greg.
Oh, you have it?
Near hours ago.
It's a great idea, I just wanted.
Yeah, I thought Greg was putting together an agenda or they were talking.
No, the agenda got voted down.
Oh.
They want it to be a Lucy general conversation.
So it's call meeting to order, open roundtable with Board of Selectment, School Committee and Finance Committee, discuss all things Maynard, and adjournment, that's, that's.
What did it say again, sorry?
All things Maynard, discuss all things Maynard.
Discuss all things Maynard.
So I guess we'll be talking budget.
So I think it's basically, it's taking the temperature of each facet of the town to see where we're, where we're all coming from and what we're thinking of and and looking at in terms of priorities and goals and whatnot, because, you know, obviously we don't know if the town would rather spend money on a police cruiser or a new ambulance, you know, like, things like that, and where are we in the process of the new fire station, because the fire chief came and presented to the budget subcommittee two weeks ago?
Yeah.
And made a very strong case for why the town really needs to move forward on that, and so that's going to be a discussion, I don't know if the topic of regionalization of the school district is going to be a topic or not, I mean, that has certainly come up in discussions at the budget subcommittee, so.
I just don't know how we do.
Why this come up with mom many times?
Nobody, nobody.
Is there any takers, I mean, I just, is that like a conversation that's active, really?
If anything, it would be Stowe.
I think what we would need to do, the last time.
Put ourselves out for bid?
The last time we did this was because we got, we had MSBA money, we were offering to give that money to other people, so I think there has to be a sell, right, like there has to be a reason for someone to want to.
And the last time, it was also Lancaster was talking about receding, and so that was the the closest decision that we, you know, the closest conversation that we had.
Lancaster?
Lancaster, they were, they, I guess they were up for renewal.
Not with, but not with Lancaster.
Oh, okay, sorry. Shoba, sorry about that, Shoba is made up of Stowe, Bolton and Lancaster, and Lancaster was talking about possibly going off, this was years ago, I mean, and, and so we, we had gone to meet with Stowe and Bolton to see if if that did happen, you know, we wanted to let them know we were very much interested in maybe, you know, being that third, third town.
So we don't have to come up with a sell, like what are we selling?
WAVM.
That's exactly what it is, we can sell that, A, we can, and this is a conversation that's sort of being held by small districts across the Commonwealth, you know, what if we teamed up in a way that provides benefit to both of the districts, so it's a different kind of regionalization, but it's a way of collaborating, but it could be a formal regionalization, I mean, that's what we're talking about with Aspen Valley, how can we increase seats for our programs in a way that financially benefits us as well as them, so it's a bit more complicated than just like, it's joined together, is that very, but, you know, so, but I do think it's a worthwhile conversation, I mean.
I'm just curious.
Dare I say, we might want to look at it for some other services too.
Right, well, I know, it's just interesting, because we always hear it being floated around, like someone will ask about it, so I didn't know if it was engaged as an active conversation, there was like some information that was someone had, or if it was just.
It's more of an exercise.
Okay, do you want to like pretty ourselves up and, you know, go outside?
I know, and if it's even, if it even makes monetary sense.
Get dressed up and go out and, you know.
Eyeshadow on, or.
Right, right, exactly, bring out the pretty dress and.
I think it's worth the con, I really do think it's worth the conversation, it's something that I've been thinking about, about how we would do it differently, so I think it's worth the conversation, it, it's just not, you know, is that going to happen next year?
No.
It would be a ten-year, if that was us.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
Right, and then, so that then you take into consideration, okay, if this is something we're going to pursue, where does that leave Green Meadow? And if that building is ten years off, do we worry about building a second Green Meadow? You know, if, so, it's all conjecture and.
Yeah, so that, those are good points, talk considerations for, I also think that being able to just, I think any circles, it's almost repetition, but wherever we can in our circles be able to say, point out the foundation funding, where things are going with the legislation and consideration of that, consideration of the fact that, looking at out-of-districts and that there's active consideration of that, but that there's, there are some factors at play in, one, being a small district, two, in just options that are available, and and really people now being able to consider those and and having those available and feeling like they have to do their due diligence to provide those options, and and the cutting of public school funding along the way, and trying to stay competitive and be able to offer those options in-house, and just really, what can we do? It's hard to do all of that and have that charge, and that we can only, it's a, it's just, it's, it's a very difficult position to be in every year, and that we can't, we we are doing, trying to do our due diligence just to project costs and use that money effectively, and I think that we're committed to making sure that we're putting the lens we need to on that, I appreciate everyone, and trying to make sure that we're doing, we're good stewards of the funding we have, and we know that you are doing that as well, but that's still, there's still, every year, just so many unknowns in the top, at the point that you have to do the budget process, and the point at which it comes through, and what can hit you, I've just seen it now again and again, and then you you have to figure it out.
Do we have a better idea now that the bill has passed how we're going to be impacted?
It hasn't passed yet.
Oh, it hasn't?
No, it went through though.
No, so they, they both, they have to like reconcile, basically, a House passed a version, a Senate passed a version, and they have to basically.
Under compromise.
Right, go through before.
So we have no idea how we're going to be impacted.
We won't know until like January or February.
Right, it would take, it's going to not be, yeah.
Oh, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Well, no, that's better than May.
That's actually not, that's, yeah, I mean, it still could be this fiscal year, you know, but, yeah.
If we can do that, that would be, if we would know that, that would really help us, yeah.
Well, but remember that this is also, so, yes, we may know the bill passes in January or what have you, the state still has to go through their budget process, right, and so how all of that plays out, hopefully they do exactly what they say, but the other thing that I would pay attention to, I think there are places where Maynard will benefit financially from these pieces, we are not going to benefit in the same way that much needier districts are, so I would not expect that this is a windfall.
And I think also, I think one of the things I know that the feedback from the Board of Selectmen is that through their budgeting process, that they're also, and I'm guessing this maybe came up in some of your, the reliance on state funding is more conservative in that approach, because, you know, you get burnt that way, right, and I think that was the other consideration is.
The other thing too is that we have to take into consideration with this bill and with the things that they're proposing, like, so, one of the things they say, you know, increase in circuit breaker, and we can add in the transportation now, well, that we can claim more, but there's also that mechanism that they they reduce the percentage.
You explained last time, yeah.
You may be able to claim more, but we may end up with the same amount of money.
Right, and that, and that was the, I think that, they said that no one will walk away with less, but that means you could be satisfied.
But that's, that's an actual law, I know we said that before, we were excited about that, but like, that's an actual law, it's called the home harm, home harmless law, so you technically, the state guarantees that you'll at least get what you got last year.
But we didn't, but we didn't this year.
Yes, we did.
Oh, yeah, that's right, we got twenty-five thousand more.
Right.
Right, yeah, okay, but then they took, then they took away, yeah.
We just had more expenses.
We had more expenses, so like our actual chapter seventy funding was the twenty dollars per child more, which is kind of like the whole harm, whole harmless law, so you at least get what you got last year, that's something that happens every single year, so we can, we can guarantee those funds, where we fell into the trap is, where, you know, we expected less of an expense for school choice sending, that's where we got hit, we also expected to not be in the home harmless, we expected foundation aid, which we.
So we're not, not relying on that funding as much.
It was because of our population, we didn't receive that either, so if you think about it, we got hit with like a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction, or increase in, hundred and eighty thousand increase in expenditures, you know, a hundred and something thousand reduction in revenue that we were budgeting, projecting for, but we still ended up with the same, basic same amount of chapter seventy funding.
But I think that's really smart, I don't know, you said it was the Board of Selectmen who were saying we need to, Maynard needs to figure out what services Maynard residents want and how we pay for them in Maynard.
Well, we've been having serious conversations in Budget Subcommittee about that.
Yeah, and they're, and they're definitely weighing those.
And if state funding comes in, that's great, but May, like this, we, we're not the district that's going to get the state to come in and pay for what we want, the state is going to give us bottom line because of our population and our residents.
And just to give, I don't know if they were certified yet or whatever, I don't know what that's actually called, but we did get our NESDEC projections and.
Yeah, they were.
They were, okay, so we did get our NESDEC projections in, and I don't know if in another meeting we'll talk about that, but they do not look good, our population drastically.
Even with 129 Parker Street and those rentals and.
According to NESDEC, you know, this is where we, you know, go by, but I think we had like thirteen forty-nine and they were projecting twelve something.
Is that something we can get ahead of the tri-board meeting, maybe?
We already have them, we have.
Oh, but no, for for us to have.
Yeah, sure, we can.
We can share that.
Because the other piece, which I feel like I brought up in different circles now, is there's some point, we've been having, there's been a lot of conversations for ten years about these compete, these competing priorities, the things, but they're all needs, so they're priorities, we consider them competing, but they all in the end come from the same.
Well, and that's where what services are most important to the.
Yeah, but then it's also where.
And what the district schools, like, and I know that this is something that people have a really hard time with, but when we talk about class size, or we talk about, you know, when you talk about like zero-based budgeting, right, and you you say, I have this many kids, this many children require this many teachers, and and really it's having that discussion of, if we have a very small class coming up, or or we have small classes moving through the system, moving teachers, you know, along that grid with the sized classes, expanding and retracting, not always keeping the same amount because that's what we've had, not necessarily, you know, cutting any positions, but moving those positions along with the bigger classes.
You need to be, be able to respond in a way that it's. You need to be, be able to respond in a way that it's within reason and, you know, financially sustainable.
And I, and I know it's a kind of tough conversation, like I said, my own district.
They're all gonna be tough conversations.
We went through the exact same thing, and, I mean, in, in, in Hudson, they, they did end up cutting twelve teachers. Um, and it was, it was hard, it was a very hard conversation. But when you didn't have the student population to support that, you really have to make that, you really have to have that conversation. Uh, and it's, I'm not saying that we look anything like what, what Hudson, we need to do anything like that, but it's, it's just having those conversations. It's really getting to the nitty-gritty of like, what do we need and are we spending our money where we need it? Are we spending our funds that is going to support our students in the best absolute way? And not just because that's how we've always expected of it.
Or because that's the, you know, moment, the thing of the moment that we feel is important. I mean, if you look at our staffing levels over the last three or four years, they literally do this. Because we're up here, we're like, oh, we have too much staff, so we're gonna cut, and we go down here, and then people get upset at what we cut, so we go back up, and then we go down, and then we go up. So if you, if you're making budgetary decisions based on, on data rather than emotion, we're going to be more in that piece, and I, and, and again, that's not easy, because a lot of the things that we're talking about are social emotional supports for students, right? Are higher professionals or special education people, that's, that's, but...
Well, the decisions need to be made in line with our goals, right? And we, that's what part of setting goals is, is that aligning, like, the decision-making following the data is, how does this fit in with the goals that we've set for ourselves as a district and as each school level?
Yep, but then we can, we can't, we can't then, in May or in March, at the budget meeting, when we have, you know, heightened emotion by folks who, you know, we, a few years ago, we had the students from the high school coming in about stu- about specific pieces. That's not the time to then make a change in that piece if you're, if you've done your diligence ahead of time, if that makes sense. So I think that there's a couple pieces.
Which, and, and just to give you an idea, in this budget process, because we have, we've moved earlier on certain things, we actually have been able to have those conversations. Um, it is, it is more about, like, we're not even having the conversations about cuts or reduction in budget, it's reallocation of funds. Like, we're really trying to talk about like, how can we allocate our funds in a way for what we need? Um, and that's, and that's something, actually, I've really been happy about our conversations, um, when it comes to that, because I think we really, if you wanna be visionary, if you want, and, and not even necessarily just visionary, but if you're, if you're moving forward, like, you want to move forward, you have to move forward based on the data that you have. Like, you have to be able to take those steps to relate your funds to what your data is saying. And that's, you know, and student population is one of them. And that's just one point, but that's a really important piece when it comes to our funding.
Well, but you have to also look at, like, for instance, if we take the example of just of increasing class sizes and that, does that mean that, is it really a win-win for the budget because we may have to bring in another paraprofessional or, you know? So that's a fine line that you've gotta, you've gotta walk.
And, and that's the conversation that we're kind of having.
And the other piece of that is how, or what is our expectation of our school environment, right? What it, what is reasonable to expect, you know, so just to give you an example, I went to a conference, a national conference, and we were talking about social emotional supports, and I had said something like, we need our teachers to be able to provide some of that low-level support within classrooms. And a gentleman, I think, was from South Carolina, said, that's ridiculous, that's unreasonable to ask our teachers, they have forty kids in a room, you know, and, and just all these, you know, they get paid twenty thousand dollars a year and thirty thousand dollars a year. It was like, that is totally fair. That's not, that's not our environment, right? So one of the pieces that we need to really unpack and explore is when we're saying we're raising class size and that's gonna require these other pieces, why is it requiring those other things? And again, is there a mindset shift we need to have in terms of that?
Absolutely, yeah, okay.
Great, so is there anything else people want to ensure that we are asking or considering ahead of the tri board meeting?
So I guess I would just be, um, you know, Bob McCarthy from Finance Committee is always so good with the long-term picture. And I guess Michelle, if you could lend any, not, you know, if you're gonna be there, right?
Yes.
Okay, just anything that you see, like, you know, the three-year, the five-year plan, what, what we would be looking at, huh?
No, I just was gonna say, were you planning on, yeah, tomorrow morning's a holiday.
You need to be there.
Three days, Mary.
I didn't even know if you were planning on being, I was like, was she even gonna be?
No, 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 she's more important than the rest of us.
No, not even, tomorrow's Friday.
You've got such a good handle that if, if you can just kinda, you know, just big picture, just kinda, this is what we're looking at, you know? Not just this year, but if things continue the way that they are, kinda thing.
I, I mean, I think what, I can say our biggest thing that we're looking at is our student population drop.
But I, I wonder, and that, that, again, part of that conversation will, I think, cause I know we have like housing that's going in, that's gonna be, so I don't know, like, I'm just thinking, was this projection considering that?
That's what I'm wondering too.
I believe, I believe it is, actually. I think they do take into consideration.
Cause those are not open and, you know, so that's where I...
I will say that regardless, there are, we have already been coming up against, over multiple years, a smaller class, maybe a larger class. A smaller class, a larger class.
Inconsistence.
And, right, and so, um, even if it's not a projected trend lower overall, we still should be having that conversation about being responsive in, in, in the case of, uh, uh, particular, uh, class.
And that's where that, the N E S D E C year by year will, will really help to...
Yeah, and Jennifer just sent it over, so, um, the only thing I, for thinking of, um, ahead of the Tuesday meeting is the, um, the Chinese school, and I don't know, I know we haven't really been engaged as a school committee on, on any of that aspect, but I know that they have a lot of around the town. There's been a lot of meetings, and I don't know, at some point, do we, should we be engaged at that?
So the, I met with them, um, when they toured the high school and I gave them the requirements, uh, they are required to present to you, to seek approval.
Okay.
I gave them the requirements.
So like a holding pattern, right now, waiting for whatever they're ready, they'll take the step, they initiate that?
They will come, they, correct, um, so, and I gave it to, I believe, um, Mrs. Ludo as well. Um, so they will come and present to you, um, I have already, um, you know, when I met with them, I said, we're very much interested in collaboration, we're very much interested in maybe doing some sharing of staff and, and students, um, to, for two reasons, one, because I think it's an opportunity, uh, but secondly, because I don't want them taking all of our internships that we want for our pathways, so...
Yep.
Um, try to get involved very at the early ground level, uh, with them, and hopefully that'll be the case. They seemed very excited about that opportunity, uh, but they, yeah, so at some point, they will wanna come and present to you. Um, they are still, as of last month, anticipating an open in the fall of twenty twenty. I can imagine how that's possible.
That's pretty aggressive, right? It's supposed to be also...
I can't imagine how that's possible.
It's not, not day school also, it's like a boarding, is, right?
Yeah, so I, I was like, oh, okay, great, good luck to you.
We'll wait till they come here.
Wow.
Yeah, it'll be like anyone.
All right. Well, is there anything else people would wanna say about that? Okay, very good. Moving on, citizens' comments, anyone, anyone, citizens' comment, okay, very good.
Our two citizens right now.
Um, members' comments.
Oh, yeah, that's right there.
This includes Subcommittee Report out, I don't know if there's anything anyone would like to say at this...
Super search.
Yes.
All right, um, so the screening committee has met twice, we've had two workshops. I think each of them went longer than they were originally scheduled. Uh, we had a lot to discuss.
Lot to say.
Lot to say, and, but, that being said, um, I think we, we've got a great group and we work really well together and everyone brings a different perspective and, um...
Very respectful.
Very respectful, and people are very considerate of what everyone else has to say, and I, I felt like it was a really productive group. Um, we're also really excited about, about the candidates that, um, that applied. I, I, yeah, I'm just, I'm very happy about, um, that, and, um, so the next steps, we start interviews next week. Um, we are, Mary is gathering the interview questions and assembling them, and then we will finalize those. We need to hopefully have an executive session after the TRICOM meeting next Tuesday so that we can discuss particulars.
If we need to do that, then I'm, I'll just need to post, so...
Yes, if you could, that would be great.
For next Tuesday? Cause Monday's a holiday, so it has to be two, two days, tomorrow's Friday.
No, I want, I want next Tuesday after the...
It's too late.
Nuh-uh.
Keep forgetting Monday's a holiday.
Tomorrow's Friday, and Monday's a holiday, so it has to be forty-eight business hours, and you can't, to post for an executive session.
Oh, yeah.
I was like, jeez, we can't do this.
Yeah. If Monday were not a holiday, it might work.
We need to do it in Sunday session before, yeah, we need to...
What do we need to do? Just, do we, okay, never mind.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, executive session, that's, yeah.
Okay, well, I just didn't know the reason, I, I guess that's what I was wondering, what reason it was under.
It has to, yeah, it has to do with the super...
Cause you have to share the reason publicly.
Right, we will do that once we figure out what the wording is, but it has to do with the superintendent's search.
So if we need to do...
I'm wondering, when, when are you talking about having this executive session?
It was gonna be after...
It was gonna be after the TRICOM meeting, cause we only need like twenty minutes, but...
Okay, I got it.
Um, but we'll have to do it another time.
Sorry, I, I was waiting, I was thinking I was posting, I was waiting for them to send it, he wasn't sending it, and then we got it, and...
Totally fine.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that stinks.
Can, it can't get posted tomorrow morning?
No, it's not forty-eight hours.
No, because Monday's a holiday, it could if, if, if Monday was open, cause that'd be two days, but Monday is...
Or we could schedule it for ten oh-three on Tuesday and post it right now, you know, because of...
It's not, doesn't open until...
All right, anyway, so...
We'll figure it out.
The time you email it counts.
Oh?
It's good to know.
You could do that. I don't think you actually wanna have your...
No, we don't.
No, we're not.
But watch, we won't get out of the TRICOM until ten o'clock and we could have done that.
Oh, we will, cause I won't be there.
Okay, thank you for all that work.
Welcome.
So do we need to think about though, when we're gonna schedule, I mean, that should get on the radar on when we need to have an executive session?
Do you wanna send, start an email? I don't wanna do scheduling right now.
No, no, but just like, cause I didn't even know that was a need, to be honest, and, um...
I didn't either.
Yeah.
No, and there's no reason you would have, just, we discussed it, um, when we met Monday and I reached out to Beth Lynn and then...
It's all good.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, it's essentially my call. So, uh, any, any other members' comments? Thank you for that.
Do you have anything else before, go ahead, you go.
No, um, I have a question about community service hours and how, how that works. Is that only for, um, National Honor Society students, like?
Like, do we require students to commit, to, uh, commit, to participate in community service?
Right.
I don't believe we have any sort of requirement, however, if someone would like to participate in community service and get, if they needed for an outside club or organization, I'm sure we have a form we can, can fill out.
Okay.
But I don't believe that we would have a high school requirement that they have to have so many hours of community service each year by graduation or something like that.
Okay, so what if, say, right now, I knew of some community service, say, for my son, and then, but he doesn't, it's not required for anything, could that go towards?
To force her?
No, no!
You can tell him it's required.
No, no, that's not, that's not what I'm saying. I, what, basically what I'm asking is, he's not, uh, in the National Honor Society or anything like that, so I'm just wondering, like, is there, are there other things within Maynard that community service is necessary?
I don't think so.
Cause you wanna be a nice, nice student.
I have no idea.
Yeah, if you're receiving confirmation.
So...
But, yeah, but no.
I, I don't mean to cut you off, but we are, we are getting late, and so I think that if you wanna...
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
So I just, um, had a couple of things, I just wanted to reiterate a great event that's going on, um, um, with our interim superintendent, she's going to have a roundtable focus group on Wednesday, November thirteenth, from five-thirty to seven at the high school library for community members, um, to come and Natasha, so that she can hear, you know, concerns and things of that nature. I know Natasha, you put it, you put it on Facebook, which is great.
Yeah, actually, I was gonna add a little enhancement, I wanna make sure we do like an, um, another email, like a blast about that if we can, because, um, and maybe put it on as events on the website, cause I know that, I wanna keep on that momentum mode.
I, I just, what's your name?
Oh, she's having, um, Mary Jane, Rixson is having superintendent's roundtable focus group.
Her roundtable and her focus session, her coffee?
I knew that, I was gonna have.
Yeah, it's okay, yeah, we can't, unfortunately, I was, I'm, but it's okay.
It was in her newsletter, but it was really exciting, yes.
Yeah, it was very exciting, I was so pleased that she's doing it.
Yeah.
Um, and then how is the director of technology search going?
Yeah.
That was my other one, good, we're getting to the one.
Um, the search, um, the finalists have been presented to Ms. Rixson for her review. I believe she is gonna review both of them. We are currently doing, um, records, or re- reference checks, um, and will make a decision from there.
Can you give them a test, like, show them the website and say, this needs to be fixed?
I know.
And then whoever does a better job.
So what's interesting is Pat was on the website, and I thought I was gonna do a really great job of being like, hey, here are the weird things you have to do. He's like, could you just give me the mouse back? I know what I'm doing. So he took the mouse and he did all the things, and he's like, this is a really restrictive site, so it, but I, but there were reasons why, uh, because the site is, is also our, uh, archiving and those types of things. So I think what we would want to do is to have the, whoever, and I believe that was asked, right, or there was some piece of it? Um, whoever the person is who comes in is to, to look at why it is the way it is, um, for the costs, you know, so I think, I, I do think we wanna look at this, but...
Cause that was one, another piece is, I happened to be on the website today too, and I found a couple of pretty significant things that are old, like our school improvement plan is last year's versus, we even have it, you know, it was two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, so it hasn't even been updated. And then our district curriculum accommodation plan is two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen.
Okay, it goes documents.
So I was like, I was a little disappointed, but, um, so, and then, um, the last thing that I had, it was more of an announcement, it was something at the high school that, um, I think is great, um, I actually received information on it from the Maynard Ed Foundation too, but um, there's a youth and philanthropy, um, grant, or I guess program that happens every year that is on the website at the high school for students to take advantage of. It's free, um, November fifteenth is the deadline for students to apply. It's a leadership development program to empower youth, um, the next generation of youth to be philanthropists. And it's a free program, seventeen weeks, it's Tuesday evenings from seven to eight-thirty, um, in Sudbury. But I'm not sure that any of our students have ever taken advantage of it, and I would, it's, it's January to May. I know it's a big commitment, it's once a week, but it's just so amazing, but if anybody's interested, it's on the high school website anyway, so, that was it.
Thank you.
All right, um, so just to echo what Mary mentioned about the superintendent community sessions, just whatever we can do to highlight, they were seeing like a really good traction on excitement about it, and specifically, it relates to the community, so if we can get it on the, the website, where it's not just for families, but it can be accessible, or maybe even a push-out from the app, if that would be something that we could consider, like have an event and it can push out, um, and have it's like a standalone email that can, for families, cause it was a lot, a lot of newsletter, and I just didn't want it to get lost in, in, in the content, uh, there. Um, and then, uh, the only other thing that everything else was mentioned, but considering, uh, I know there's a lot of discussion on how we make um, safer commuting or just coming to school, kids on, you know, bikes, and also I know there's conversations about cars, a lot of speeding, and I know that there's some schools who promote, um, carpool apps that, um, I don't know, as we think about, you know, traffic on campus with, with cars, is that something that maybe the safety committee or some conversations, um, that maybe Maynard, I mean, we're certainly, I'm sure, an easy carpool town, but something that maybe it might be worth exploring from a safety perspective, um, green perspective. I know we have limited bus seats, you know, so maybe as an alternative, that could be promoted, um, for families who can't get bus, um, access to a bus. That's it.
Thank you. Um, I, uh, will save most of my comments, except that we did have a curriculum, a communication, um, Subcommittee meeting just to lay out, um, the, what we wanna pull in for source documents to try to, whether it's a communication plan in play, there's, um, stuff that came from a communication task force, there's, um, consideration of, of types of communication and flow that we'd like to be able to consider for the district in relation to our goals. So we, we laid all that out in our first meeting, and we have a follow-up meeting in a few weeks, so I just wanted to mention that. Okay?
And I think all these folders need to go back, right?
Yeah, folders will go back. Uh, motion, uh, entertaining motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I second, no, I get to second this time.
Okay.